Good evening. I would like to call the school board meeting for Tuesday, November 26, 2024, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. We are happy to see all of you tonight. Ms. Rios, would you please take the role?
Yes, Ms. Alonso. Here. Ms. Campos.
Here.
Mr. Dix.
Here.
Ms. Knox.
Here.
Ms. Martirano.
Here.
Mr. Mayberry Mays.
Here.
Ms. Norris.
Here.
We have quorum.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Knox.
We have a motion by Dixon, a second by Knox. Is there any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Public forum. Next on the agenda is the public forum. We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda and up to five minutes for an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of the business meeting, please email rosa.rios@dm schools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called individually, and we ask they state their name and address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their address. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to programs, services, and operations of DMPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated, and individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in a discussion with public forum speakers, as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at the time after the meeting. Thanks for your participation. We appreciate your feedback and impact, input. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers for the public forum?
Yes, we do. First up is Alicia Smith. Next speaker is Ryan Howell.
Thank you. Ryan Howell, 831 16th Street. I was here last month, and I just want to say thank you for the robust discussion that you all had, and it's very clear that you're all taking this issue of the cellphone restrictions and cellphone use in our schools very seriously. And so I'm here tonight to hear the follow-up conversation and to encourage you to keep going forward. Dr. Roberts, I saw the draft that you had circulated, and I'm encouraged by that, and I want to encourage you guys to keep moving forward as quickly as possible. I know that there's discussion, and one of the key points is whether or not to move forward in the spring or the fall. I understand there's a lot of stakeholders to involve. I guess I would suggest, as part of the dialogue, let schools, give schools the tools that maybe some schools want to move forward in the spring. Let those folks move forward if we're not ready for a full district-wide, but give them the tools to start restricting and putting in place guidance. And I would encourage you also to, and I know in your notation you indicated likely it would have maybe two different forms. Maybe it would have restricted in the classroom and maybe allowed during the lunch period and in between classes. I have four students, four children that are in the Des Moines Public Schools, one of which is a sixth grader at Calumet. And I asked him about cellphone use and how he sees it. That school has a good policy right now, as far as at least the beginner step, where they don't allow them in the classrooms, and I think that works pretty well. And I said, so how about, how's your lunch? How is it in between classes? And he said, well, Dad, some of my best friends at lunch go silent. They don't interact with me or anybody. The only kids I can talk to at lunch are the kids like myself who don't have a cellphone with them. He said, so that spring semester, that's roughly 90 days of engagement that our kids could be across the district involved in. 90 days of those lunch periods, those classrooms that we're missing out on. So I'd encourage you to keep going forward and keep considering the impact, and every day we have is an opportunity to engage our children and give them the best learning environment. So appreciate your consideration for this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tim Pascarnas.
All right, good evening. I'm Tim Pascarnas, live at 1521 Center Street. I'm also a parent of two Des Moines Public School kids. We're in eighth grade and fifth grade right now, which means we're sort of looking forward to next year and moving out of elementary school into middle and high school, which is kind of squarely in the territory, where this policy is probably going to be most impactful. And really, I'm here probably not to say anything new, but just to lodge another vote of support in favor of continuing the work that has already been done. I think the draft policy is a fantastic start. It is already kind of a long timeline, right? We're looking out over a year. There are reasons for that. There are lots of stakeholders to involve. There's lots of input to gather, and so I want to be aware of that. But I also want to sort of underscore that because of that, the policy appears to have a lot of flexibility to take that input, to make course corrections along the way. And that is perhaps more encouragement to move towards implementation quicker, that I know it's on the agenda tonight for discussion, and there needs to be discussion, but there will also be discussion throughout the entire process. And so I would again just encourage the board to not let perfection be the enemy of progress, knowing that there are opportunities throughout the development and then throughout implementation to make changes, to learn from our experiences. And so with that, I would just look forward to further discussion and to continue to move this forward in a way that it's going to have some beneficial effects for all of our students as soon as we can practically do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for speakers. Those are all the speakers.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our district recognition. Superintendent Roberts, are there any recognitions for today? I think there is.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here this evening. As we continue to bring forth recognition at school board meetings, we are, we celebrate the success and accomplishments of our students and staff in and out of the classroom. This evening, I have a couple of examples that I would like to share. I'm excited to share. I'm happy to share that the recognitions this evening are well-earned honors. They are well-earned honors for our DMPS staff, highlighting both their work in the classroom as well as in our operational areas in the school district. Last week, the Iowa Department of Education named nine educators as the 2025 Regional Teachers of the Year. Essentially, what this means is that these nine teachers not only represent the best that we in the state of Iowa in our public schools have to offer, but the nine individuals named as Regional Teachers of the Year are now finalists to be named to the coveted Iowa Teacher of the Year. It is a great honor, something all of us at the Des Moines Public Schools are excited about, and one that our own Blake Hammond is a part of. Amongst other things, Blake is a very spirited educator. He was one of the first two teachers, I think, that I was in communication with when I was named a superintendent. I hadn't even had gotten an Iowa address, and I knew who Blake Hammond was. He remembers that communication. Blake serves as a science teacher at Merrill Middle School, and he did for more than two decades of service to our students, where he's earned the support and admiration of not only students and peers alike, but they have placed him continuously, and now we see the Department of Education has as well, on that very shortlist of the best, the very best teachers here in the state of Iowa. You cannot have amazing teachers without rock star principals. And as his principal, Kate Panek, has noted, Mr. Hammond is not only an excellent educator, but a teacher who makes every single student feel safe, welcome, and valued in his science classroom. You may recall last year, around the same time, Ann Minx of Hoover High School was named as Iowa Teacher of the Year. Since I came to Des Moines, I've had no doubt that this school district was home to some of the best and brightest and most dedicated teachers to be found anywhere, not only in the state of Iowa, but anywhere in the country. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me this evening as we congratulate again Mr. Hammond on his well-deserved honor. And I am pleased that both Mr. Hammond and Principal Kate Panek are here. I want to invite them to come forward to the podium to share a little bit about this amazing teacher and what is happening at Merrill. Welcome there.
Thanks for having us tonight. My name is Kate Panek. I am the principal at Merrill, and just really honored to get to serve with Blake every day, as all of you. He also emailed me right away, was one of my first conversations after taking the baton from Alex Hannah, and just really a shining star when it comes to what we would all want for our own kids in a classroom. And many of you, your kids have been in Mr. Hammond's classroom. Something that's quite memorable for me in thinking about Blake is during the pandemic, so hard to get kids engaged. And Mr. Hammond, he would put out these daily science challenges, and we would get back videos from these kids who had built contraptions in their backyard and were engaged in science inquiry every single day. And that's just a small example of the type of leadership he has. Also, if anyone needs help with anything, a student, a parent, a community member, a principal, a superintendent, Blake is always there to help. He really has the best interests of students in mind, and I just cannot think of a better shining star to represent our state than Blake Hammond. So Blake, congratulations.
Well, board members, thank you, and Dr. Roberts. First of all, if you give me the microphone, Rosie, you might have to start a timer because you know that it might take me a while to be quiet. No, what an honor. When I was told initially that I was being nominated, first of all, I was trying to figure out who, because I was like, really? You know, you just, you don't go into this job ever thinking that there's going to be any recognition for what you do, because it is about, for me, 125 students that come. And even as I walked up the hallway here, five of my students are in the library or in the cafeteria. So when I'm done, I got to go back out there, because they were saying hello to me, and it's like you can't just walk by. And that's what it's about, you know? 24 years into this, and I was trying to do the math, and I'm like, gosh, I've taught about 4,000 students, and that's what it's about. And something that I want you all as a board and superintendent to think about is that the last week, the outpouring of love and support for what I do has been unbelievable. And the cost of that attention, zero. And what I mean by that is that there are 2,300, by my last count, really amazing teachers in the classroom right now. They are our Des Moines Public Schools, my colleagues, the people that I have the honor to say, yeah, those are the people. And so perhaps as a system, as we think about the importance of teacher retention, maybe there's something there that doesn't cost us a cent, because literally Phil and his team posted the picture of me, and it just flooded. It just flooded. I had former students of mine that I hadn't touched base with. There was one young lady, and I won't mention her name just because I don't want her to feel bad about it, but a girl I would have not put in the top 1,000 students that would have ever remembered or recognized me, sent me the most beautiful message there, and I just went, holy cow, that's why you do this, because you don't know 20 years later, when the girl sees your picture and goes, oh, yeah, I was in that Mr. Hammond's class, and she remembered a lab that we did called the humdinger. And I went, holy cow, and the assignment we did for three days, 20 years later, still resonated for her. And so as a system, I think there's something right in front of us that costs us nothing, which is to find and give everyone that opportunity to have current students, former students, parents, colleagues, members of the community, give them the shout-out that they deserve, because I have been on cloud nine and totally overwhelmed for the last week by all of the outpouring of support from people for just doing my job. I just go every day and try to be the best teacher that I can, and most days it's good, and some days, honestly, eh. Don't tell her. It's not always, you know, but it is. That's the reality of teaching. You know, it's the reality of we put our best foot forward, and most of the time we get it right, and sometimes we get it wrong. But the students keep us honest, the community keeps us honest, the work that you're doing drives us forward in a positive direction. So let's think about how we can take the recognition that I'm feeling and make that expand and grow to others. Truly, thank you for the time. Most of you have reached out to me. Thank you. And I know some of you gave me the wave. Dr. Roberts, thank you for the recognition. It's unbelievable. And here's hoping, two Des Moines teachers in a row? Let's make it happen.
Congratulations again, Blake and Kate. Madam Chair, the next recognition, if I may, certainly really speaks volumes about the fact that not only are we as Des Moines Public Schools exhibiting excellence in our instructional practices, but our operational programs as well. Want to give a shout-out to our Executive Director of Operations, Dave Berger, and Tyler Puls, and our entire operations team for another, not just a recognition, but a national recognition of the work here at Des Moines Public Schools. Last week, the U.S. Department of Energy announced districts selected for their energy champions, leading the advancement of sustainable schools programs. The school district in this program, school districts in this program will work to develop energy-saving strategies and create healthy learning environments and achieve great cost savings, serving as models for other districts around the country. This year, there are only 60 school districts nationwide selected to participate. So congratulations, go to Operations Department for the latest honor and everything that you do each day to make our schools well-run centers for teaching and learning. Congratulations.
David's really humble, isn't he, over there?
He is. I think he's been on his feet all day, so it's okay for him to sit. Ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't already listened to the latest edition of the podcast that is fastly becoming the best education podcast in the land, the Become Here project, our own DMPS podcast, be sure to download it for great interviews. Madam Chair, that concludes this evening's recognitions.
The next item on our agenda is our monitoring report, Goal Two. I will turn it over to Ms. Alonso. See? Yes? Okay. I, well. Well, I know. That's why I was trying to make it nice. That's your parting gift.
I'm even speaking Spanish here. See?
Ms. Martirano, would you like to monitor the report with us tonight?
I would love to help facilitate our monitoring conversation this evening. As a board, it is our responsibility to listen to our community voices, set a vision, monitor the district's progress towards achieving that vision, and make investments that support the vision. To monitor progress, the board will spend time during board meetings reviewing data specific to our goals and our guardrails. Progress monitoring is an opportunity for the board to ask questions to help us understand whether there's alignment between our vision, the goals that we've set, and our reality, the current student performance and growth. To understand whether or not we're making this progress, we will ask, does the reality match our vision? Is there growth toward the vision? And is there a strategy and plan sufficient to cause growth towards that vision? We will analyze data, ask specific questions to help us better understand the needs of our students. This review of data will better inform our decisions as a governing body when we review policies, budget, and other district initiatives. Each monitoring report is, of course, specific to the goal and/or guardrail, and the monitoring will have data that shows what we're doing compared to, how we're doing compared to the targets that we've set for ourself annually. So our first monitoring conversation of the evening is going to be monitoring Goal Two. The percentage of Black and Latinx eighth-grade students scoring proficient or advanced on the ISASP ELA, English Language Arts Assessment, will increase from 38.5% in spring of 2023 to 55% in spring of 2027. Within Goal Two, we are monitoring three interim goals in this particular monitoring report, and I am happy to report that this particular evaluation, or the superintendent's evaluation of our progress, is in fact on track for this goal. So I would like to open up the floor to my board colleagues for questions regarding this monitoring report. We will start with questions that look at how we got to where we are, so past focus questions to understand the current reality. Once we're done with those past focus questions, we will transition into those future focus questions to understand the strategies moving forward to keep us on track with this on-track evaluation. So board colleagues, I will open it up for questions. Who will be the first to share a question for Dr. Roberts and team?
I have a, just a clarifying question, Dr. Roberts. Is this the first time that we have monitored with combined student populations?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Dr. Roberts, on page one, under interim Goal Two A for our sixth graders, you indicate that we are on track, we are above where we need to be for this goal. To what do you attribute this growth and us being on track? What's going well?
Thank you, Board Member Martirano. Before I respond to the question, please indulge me. While every single one of our goals and monitoring are incredibly important, this one stands out for a myriad of reasons, and one is the trend that we are seeing with the increase in population for this particular group of students. I share that because the context that I want to have you consider is that our recent certified enrollment, our district-wide English Language Arts for multilanguage learners is at 25.6% and continuing to grow. So more than a quarter of our students fall into this category. And a breakdown, we have 29% of those students are at our elementary schools, 25.4% in middle, and a little over 23% at our high schools. And so this is incredibly important to us. In terms of the why and the what to be attribute, some of the successes that we are seeing is a shift in many of our practices. I want to name three. One is the fact that when we think about English language learners, we are not only sort of dependent on those teachers of English language learners to focus and support this group of students, but ensuring that they're moving towards proficiency, steadily towards proficiency, is everyone's business in the school. That includes every teacher, every staff, and every leader. Secondly, last year, with certainly the board's generosity and willingness, we invested heavily in a framework that is focused on cultural responsiveness, the GLEAM framework, which truly focuses not only on grid-level instruction, but how can we provide engaging, meaningful, and affirming instructional practices to all of our students, particularly our students who come from very diverse backgrounds? And we are seeing that investment thus far is showing us a little bit of a return. While it's very early, we are seeing indications where teachers are now better able to engage with those students. And then thirdly, there has been more of an investment in truly adopting and utilizing our high-quality curriculum across the board in grades pre-K through 12.
Thank you. And may I just ask, that data point that you shared regarding our multilingual learners, is that in the report? Is that identified?
And roommate numbers?
The multilingual learners? It's not?
It is not. It's not in the report.
Okay. Thank you.
We can certainly add it as an amendment if that is helpful.
I don't think that's necessary.
Dr. Roberts, just out of curiosity, does the team ever look at, for context, where our group of students sits in national averages? Are there, I know we're not measuring necessarily the same thing everyone else is, but is there any context to be had here for where Des Moines is to give your team an idea of whether we're ahead or behind?
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Dix. Certainly. And so as a part of, as a member of the Council for Grade-City Schools, they have a focus on multilanguage learners as well, and we often reach out to them to look at comparative data. And while I don't have that data at my fingertips, what I'll share with you for context is as we think about what is happening within the state of Iowa, Des Moines Public Schools' instructional supports and service for multilanguage learners is looked at as one of the exemplars. As a matter of fact, one of the Teacher of the Year who we mentioned earlier from last year is a multilanguage learner or ELL teacher. So yes, we are going to certainly continue to look at the comparative data.
Dr. Roberts, on page four, you mention collaboration. So job, under what's going well, job embedded professional learning supported by curriculum coordinators, instructional coaches, associate principals, and PLCs leads focused on the implementation loop, the planning, observation, and feedback. This collaboration, so I'm specifically interested in that collaboration happens twice a week in teacher planning focuses on unpacking lessons. What is it about that collaboration that is working so well?
Yep.
Yeah, I can speak to that. That is the job embedded professional learning that goes along with our GLEAM framework. So there's tools that teachers can use to unpack the lesson, to ensure that they are looking at the grade level, to ensure that they are looking at the pieces of the lesson that support productive struggle, that support student engagement. There's a planning process that they go through, and it just helps us implement our curriculum, but also implement the GLEAM framework. We started that more than a year ago, but really this year, trying to close what we call the loop, in that planning that lesson one day, and then having some of those support folks that are, people that are listed here, go observe that very lesson, and then come back to the PLC and give feedback around, we planned this, this is why we planned it, this, you know, this might be some adjustments that we made, did it work? Right? Did we get what we wanted out of that? So we really worked on, because that's how you're going to grow, right? You're going to have to give that feedback around what we planned. And that's just two days a week. Teachers plan and collaborate all other days. This is just one type of collaboration that we're supporting in the schools.
Thank you. Dr. Roberts, on page four, under what's not going well, you mentioned the gap between our Black and Latinx students is greater than 20%. Can you help us understand what's happening here, and what do you think is the cause of that gap?
Is that on IEPs?
Oh, students with IEPs. Thank you.
So there are a number of things, and I'm going to certainly punt to the team shortly. We realize, one, that we have some areas in which we can get bitter around how we're delivering targeted and differentiated instruction to meet the needs of students with disabilities. One very telling data point, even as we've referenced our most recent ISSP profile data, not meeting the needs of students with IEPs. And as a district, we have 15% of our students with disabilities, so we are making adjustments now to our instructional program or instructional delivery model. You know, we are still hopeful, because our instructional delivery model in terms of serving students with IEPs- serving students with IEPs is focused more on providing students with services in the least restricted environment in LRA. Very technical, I'm going to break it down because I want to make sure that everyone is following along. So when you're serving students with disabilities, they're certain, the LRE is the least restrictive environment, and the LRA is where you have students who receive an instruction with all of their grade-level peers regardless of their disability. We've acknowledged that we can certainly grow and get better and improve in how we're delivering that instruction to meet the needs of all of those students because we have not done the best job of that.
Yes, I'll speak to that as well. We have some incredibly dedicated special education personnel on both the campus and the district levels, and it's not for lack of hard work, but we do need some systemic analysis, which is being undertaken now following the most recent ISPP results related to the gaps in performance between our mainstream and students with disabilities or IEPs, and particularly so for our Black and Latinx students. It's unacceptable for us to see that based on a student having an IEP that they are not on the same growth trajectory as their non-students with disabled peers. And in particular, for our students who are of color, who are dealing with the conditions of specific IEPs, it's a priority for us to analyze campus by campus and IEP by IEP, how goals that have been set are appropriate, how they're being effectively monitored, and how then we're ensuring that we're seeing systematic progress for them along the way.
That sounds like a very big undertaking. What would you say is the timeline of something like that? When we're talking 15% of our population and a system-wide analysis of what's working and what's not working?
So I'll jump in before Dr. London jump in. So that's immediate, right? We recognize that there has to be a sense of urgency to do this, and some of the key pivots that we've started to talk about and intend to make includes how we're providing support to those teachers. One area where we recognize that there's a gap, and it's an area that has proven, that had proven success across the country, is our co-teaching model, right? While we've seen co-teaching in some of our classrooms, it's not a system-wide focus as yet.
I would echo that. We received the ISPP results about a week and a half ago. Once we saw particularly which schools had a targeted status based on students with disabilities and IEP, I went immediately to the relevant executive director on my team and asked for basically an autopsy on all of those campuses in relation to how those specific gaps have occurred and whether it's a question of reassessing the viability of specific IEPs or how they've been executed upon. This is going to be a persistent priority for the next year and beyond until we can get to the point where we are confident that our students with IEPs are on a comparable trajectory for growth as their non-IEP peers.
Okay, and I don't believe, I don't want to get into the future focus, but I don't believe that that's listed as an action step or a strategy unless I missed that. Is that an accurate statement?
That is accurate.
Okay. So is that something that we can assume will be added to the list of action steps and strategies moving forward?
Certainly.
How do, sorry, page one, looking at Two A, obviously, it's exciting to see almost a 5% exceed from the target that you set. And so I have two questions. One, how do you actually have conversations with individual teachers about this data so they understand and they can correlate this success to the methods that they're utilizing?
I'll start it off, and then the team would certainly build on this. Kelly, you referenced earlier the implementation loop, and so when we think about those conversations that will happen with teachers, the implementation loop essentially is observing how teachers are teaching, providing them with feedback that is granulated to their pedagogical delivery, and then observing them doing it again. And so I think we want to have those conversations that are anchored in data. And so every single conversation that our coaches or our instructional leaders are going to have with our teachers, they want to make sure that the data that is specific to every single student really leads and drives those conversations. And those conversations need to occur at a level of frequency. Then the third and final thing that I share is, I have been impressing upon every single instructional lead in the district, and they are invested in this as well, and that is when we are engaging with our teachers, it's not through the lens of evaluation, right? We know that inevitably, teachers by state law will be evaluated. Our commitment here in Des Moines Public Schools is to engage with those teachers, Madam Chair to your question, from a lens of coaching, building capacity, and improvement.
So to be just a tad bit more precise, whose responsibility is it to look at the data and sit with the teachers in that implementation loop? And is that a regular thing that happens? I don't know if it's quarterly or?
Yeah, so that, a data analysis of this data would happen at the school level. So schools have data teams, they have PLCs that look at data outside the implementation loop. So data, this data, data from mid and end-of-unit assessments, which track are we on track to increasing the data on FastBridge? So that would happen in PLCs and data teams, that would be the principals. We work with the principals on unpacking this data, and coaches, and then they would work with the teachers on unpacking that, either in school-wide or in their grade-level PLC time.
So this data would be sliced and diced up on the macro and micro level and filtered down all the way from principal supervisors down to principals, then assistant and associate principals, and down to grade-level chairs and those that are leading content areas to make sure that we're looking specifically at the different fragments of the student population and how their data is panning out.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Roberts, interesting that you bring up the idea that this is not their, this observation is not their assessment, their teaching assessment. Because of some recent conversations with teachers, there is a feeling that there, that is part of their evaluation. And I wonder if I can give you an opportunity to just say loud and clear from this board table that what this is in service of is improvement of our teaching in service of our goals, not observation of teachers that would be in any way punitive for them and their jobs.
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Dick. So I think culturally, right here in Des Moines Public Schools, it is very clear to me, when I've listened to our principal supervisors, I've observed their interactions, or a chief academic officer, or our directors in elementary, middle, and high schools, I have not heard them use terms like evaluation. And so, you know, if teachers, any teachers are feeling that, we certainly remain open to hearing them provide us with that feedback. You know, no teacher wants to show up every single day knowing that when district leaders are spending time in their classrooms is through the lens of evaluation. I think what we are probably also hearing and experiencing is an unprecedented number of observations that teachers are experiencing, and rightly so. Because in order for us to improve teacher practice and provide them with adequate support, we have to be present. And so we currently have a scope and sequence for instructional rounds that many of our teachers have probably never experienced before. And I want to say loud and clear from this board table, this is all intended to make sure that we are improving outcomes not only for you, but for our students.
I just want to make a quick comment. Going through what is going well, on the bottom, it does talk about the instructor, instructional rounds and GLEAM inventory walks. I was able to go on one of those, and I did see this whole process going. And honestly, as a parent, I felt that it went really smooth. So just trying to get that momentum increased for the next year and seeing this increase higher next year, I'm really eager to see.
Thank you.
You knew I was probably going to ask this question, knowing my personality. On page one, Two A, it's amazing, the growth. And yet, when you look at the students meeting the benchmark, we're only talking about 323 out of a total of 1,062, which is actually really, we need to keep pushing on that harder. And so I guess my question is, and I'm not saying anybody just wants to be mediocre, but at what point might we look at adjusting the target to continue to elevate and raise the bar for those of us that are competitive? And maybe that's not the right way to look at it. But it's great, right? And so at what point do you look and see a trend and then consider, you know, raising the goal?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the team and I appreciate this question because it is no secret that we are here. We have an appetite to be incredibly nimble when it comes to setting targets and achieving targets. So once we start to demonstrate achievement towards a specific target, we're not going to keep it constant just so that we can exceed it. We're going to continue to stretch ourselves even as we are looking at getting, moving steadily towards proficiency. And so, you know, while I also want to be thoughtful about whether or not this stays within the parameters of our SOFG model, we will certainly, the data and assessment and evaluation team, and I will come back to the board with suggestions about moving targets when we're moving steadily towards proficiency.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Roberts, on both page one and two, there is a drop in the graph. And I wonder if you ever look back and, or if the team looks back and tries to assess what the conditions were for that drop so that we can make sure that that doesn't happen again? We've made progress that we don't see that drop again.
We do. There is certainly a number of practices around authoritative analysis, particularly looking at five-year trend or three-year trend data, so that we can look at lessons learned and make sure that we are not, again, to your point, Board Member Dick, we are not making the same mistakes again. So yes, we continue to do a deep dive analysis, and that drives and anchors how we move forward.
I would love to dig into that a little bit more, and I was going to wait because I feel like it's kind of a future question as well. But first, I don't think we said we were on track with this. Did we, I mean, I think we've been, okay, you did, okay. Well, kudos, we'll say it again.
But now we want more.
It was great, of course, of course. It's great to see us on track, right? And then when you kind of look at the numbers a little closer, you see, like, for example, on page one, oh, well, this is about where we were in fall of 2024, and then we had a decline, right? Or we're pretty much on track with where we were last fall as well. I mean, there's some variation. And so that is exactly my question, is that if you look back historically, the numbers have sort of declined over time or varied a lot, and the numbers that you and your team set are all, you know, growth. And so I'm really interested in the exact sort of strategies that you're going to deploy, looking forward to make sure that when we come back to the table to look at the spring data, there's not a decline, if you don't mind.
Yeah, thank you. So we are looking at a number of sort of approaches, right? We look at fall-to-spring data, and also recently, we've looked at the cohort data. When you look at the last three years in terms of the trend, it is fair to say that, one, the implementation dip that every sort of school system experienced when you have a new curriculum probably was a part of what we've seen in terms of that data. We are now in year five, I believe, of this curriculum adoption, so that certainly is a part of it. Secondly.
So wait, for those of us that aren't in education, that means that you don't anticipate that being an issue moving forward?
After year five, if implementation dip is brought to the table, it means that the team is making an excuse, and we're certainly not a team of excuses.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes. Additionally, I certainly want to mention, and then the team can chime in here and share, you know, many of the practices that we are focused on right now around a relentless focus in instructional leadership, looking at shifting and changing pedagogical practices. While some of those may have been in place over the last several years, I think there's much more of a refined focus by the instructional team that's in place, many of whom are new. And so I think that's a big part of the reason why we're starting to see movement in the right direction.
If I can echo what Dr. Roberts has noted, he's absolutely right that we needed to get ourselves in order in firmly adopting the curriculum and using it with fidelity. And kudos to a number of members of the team, but particularly Kelly Schofield here to my left, who has done yeoman's work in instilling the importance of using the curriculum with fidelity across schools. FastBridge is designed to assess both fluency and comprehension. And so now, with the teachers that we're working with having a firm grasp on how this curriculum can be used effectively, the challenge becomes how we're ensuring that it's being done consistently and with rigor. And both Ms. Campos and Ms. Alonso have had the chance to join us on instructional rounds and have seen how we've been able to hone in in specific classrooms on whether or not the way in which instruction is happening, particularly in literacy blocks, but also in social studies, where you are reinforcing a lot of the literacy strategies, can be done at the requisite level of rigor so that when that kid then does take the FastBridge A reading, that it translates into the appropriate level of growth.
I really appreciate you saying that and that we're keeping an eye on the growth that's necessary throughout the entire year. So thank you for sharing that information.
Yeah, I would like to say, when you were talking about, we look at historical data, data over time, and we have, we took a deep dive into that over the past couple of years and seen that our data comes in stronger coming into sixth grade. That's elementary data, right? That's coming up. And what happens, or what has happened, it's not going to happen this year, is we start going down in sixth grade. And we've talked about this even last year, about like we, we continue to kind of go down and then make a little bit of an improvement in eighth grade. So we have put a lot of focus and efforts into sixth grade this year, sort of trying to bring in language-rich class, the ideas from elementary into middle around language-rich classrooms, language strategies, literacy across all disciplines. We've done a lot of professional learning with our leaders and then with our teachers around the, you know, reading like a scientist, writing like a scientist, reading like a social scientist. You know, that's a specific skill to read like a mathematician than it is to read in your ELA class. And we've really tried to pull out those literacy practices across disciplines so students have those experiences all day long and not just in one space. So we feel like that's going to really help us keep from having that dip.
Thank you.
And we have to have that accelerated growth to catch up. And I hear you.
Dr. Roberts, under what is not going well, you mentioned that there's variance among building implementation of high-quality curriculum materials and unpacking the process. What are the barriers to that, there being no variance?
I'll kick it off with a couple, and the team can pitch in. Certainly, variation in capacity amongst school leaders, similarly, variation in capacity amongst teachers. And the third thing that I'll share is just consistency with how we are implementing the high-quality curriculum. And so again, you know, I think from what has been shared with me by some of our stalwart leaders in the district is we are now moving away from a culture of school-by-school autonomy towards more consistency with how we're implementing our high-quality curriculum.
And that comes down to us on all levels of the organization instilling the fact that, as we talked about previously, the fidelity of this curriculum and its execution is not something that can be taken lightly. Principals need to be monitoring what they're prioritizing, and so they are being coached and guided in directly observing how in PLCs and in other planning sessions that the curriculum itself is not only being executed with fidelity, but as is designed within itself. Within our group of teachers and associates and co-teachers, there are sometimes skill issues in which their fluency or familiarity with how to utilize the curriculum can vary. And there are sometimes will issues where we need to have conversations around the fact that having a high-quality curriculum means that we use it with consistency and that we make strategic choices with our instruction, but we do so within the confines of the high-quality content that we know we can count on across schools and classrooms.
Another barrier outside of that is the variance in the amount of new teachers that a school has, and we're seeing that, the strain that that puts on the support staff at that school to support a new curriculum. We do some onboarding things throughout the year, but it's not enough to really get our teachers caught up and supported. So the more new teachers you have, which we have a couple of schools that have proportionally more, we've been talking about- we've been talking about how are we going to support that differently going into this next semester and then next year so that we can support curriculum, not just the ELA, but the math and the science as well.
Thank you. Board colleagues, are we ready to transition into future focus and next steps and strategies moving forward?
I actually have one more question. Just page four, under what's not going well, the, let's see, fourth bullet. Dr. Roberts, you mentioned the 24-25 GLEAM inventory data showing a decrease in the percentage of classrooms where students are actively engaged with standards-aligned tasks. Can you share what's contributing or what's creating that decrease in that percentage of the classrooms?
Yeah, thank you, Salanzo Diaz. And so, with the GLEAM inventories, we have a checklist where you can look at some of the practices that are happening or that are not happening. And one of the observations that we have made is, and since this is a middle school particularly, we are thinking about grade six, seven, and eight. In our earlier grades, we're seeing, the teachers have more of a propensity to allow students to engage with the high-quality curriculum. Two ways that we frame that is you're seeing more of students carrying the cognitive load or the cognitive lift, whereby, meaning if you walk into a classroom, you're likely to see equity in terms of student voice versus teacher voice. Meaning, the teacher's not just standing in front of a classroom and just delivering for a 65-minute period. The teacher's really engaging students and allowing them to productively struggle with tasks that are challenging. As we've looked at some higher-grade levels, and this can be for myriad of reasons. And I think one is, we tend to see more behavioral challenges in our middle school classrooms. And it's, this one is, and I'm saying this based on observation as well as based on research, it's likely that teachers are having a little bit more sort of a desire to have more control. And so, you're likely to hear their voices even more as they address some behavioral challenges. And so, this one, while I would necessarily posit it as easy to fix, it is fixable because we have a really strong group of principals in our middle schools and a solid group of principal supervisors in both middle and elementary schools. And so, this is doable. We acknowledge that this is not going well, but it's certainly on our radar.
So, you fully attribute this decrease to behavioral challenges?
No, not at all. That's just a part of it. I think it's certainly a critical part of it is pedagogical practices, how we should up in classrooms. Yep.
Future focus and next steps and strategy moving forward.
On page four, we have talked about this a little bit already about students, Black and Latinx students with IEPs and the benchmark being greater than 20% or that gap being greater than 20%. To what extent are other options being looked at? And as we sit at the board table and think about how we're putting resources together for the success of this goal, where are other, are we considering other options so that we are not doing this? You mentioned across buildings, this is a challenge.
Yes.
There was once one building where a lot of this instruction happened with teachers who had specialties and you had a faculty that was doing the same work. What, to what extent is that conversation happening so there might be more efficiency and better success?
So, as we continue to look at the quality of service that we are providing to students with IEPs and the continuum of supports, we know that we have to improve our instructional delivery model. And, you know, just even in my own observation and based on the data that I've gotten from the team, we are getting a lot of positive traction. So, this data, I don't expect that we will continue to see this gap existing. But one that we attributed, alluded to earlier, which you rightfully pointed out that is not listed here, is we have to look at and consider resource reallocation. We have to sort of consider a co-teaching model, right? One where we're truly meeting the needs of every single student. The majority of students who have an IEP as designated by, you know, again, the Individual with Disabilities Act, Education Act, have a math goal and an ELA goal or reading goal. So, we have to reallocate resources to make sure that we are, one, providing those teachers with the resources that they need in order for us to move the needle with these students in terms of proficiency, moving towards proficiency.
Can you just explain to me how that is a reallocation of resources? Co-teaching model, explain to me, I mean, I don't know what that means.
Yeah.
And then how would we see that? Is that additional staff you're talking about?
It is additional staff. Co-teaching model, there, again, there are five different co-teaching models. The one that I'll share with you, for example, is, and I'm getting very technical, one lead, one assist, or one teach, one assist, right? And this is where you have two qualified teachers in a classroom. And while one is considered a lead teacher, the second teacher is assisting, but not necessarily assisting in non-instructional ways. But they now have an opportunity, if there are 20 students, for example, in the classroom, and 10 of those students have IEPs, instead of having one teacher carry the heavy instructional burden of trying to accommodate all of those teachers, you have two teachers who have co-planned and prepared and are now co-teaching because they're familiar with, one, how the lesson structure is, and, two, they're familiar with the IP goals of every single student. As it stands right now, I believe that we have very few co-teaching classes, or not enough.
Not enough.
Across the district.
And supporting those classes and those teachers with professional learning, ongoing support would be another need.
Fantastic. Thank you. And that's not, that's not outlined here in the report. Is it the co-teaching recommendation or the?
It is not.
Again, unless I missed it. Okay. So, there's a couple of things that have come up that we've discussed as future-focused, the systemic analysis of our special education program, our students with IEPs and how we're servicing them. I'm also hearing, you know, some data or some what's next regarding co-teaching not being included in the report. And I wonder if it makes sense, and we're not there quite yet, there's still time for more questions, but I wonder if it makes sense to make sure that the report is revised to include some of these things that have come up, if they are in fact next steps, so that they are there documented before our approval as a, at the board table. Are there other questions, or should I seek a motion right now on that? Board colleagues, other future-focused questions?
Sorry about that. I'm over here struggling.
Do you need some water?
I'm good now. For future focus, first, congratulations, Dr. Roberts, on having a, and the team on having a goal that is at, on track. I was very excited to see that. My question is around, I think this is page five, maybe around what's next, around the task force team being assembled. And I would be interested in learning a little bit more about who is being convened within that task force team. Is this just district personnel, or will this also be collaborative with community partners or parents, teachers, or who's included in that task force?
Kelly?
So, right now, it's building leaders and district personnel to just get some framework and some ideas together about, it's really looking at the fifth to sixth grade transition, but also looking at how we could, how we might structure sixth grade differently. So, if we have sixth grade in an elementary school, or if a sixth grade's in a middle school, how they're similar and what does the sixth grade's day look like? So, that's what we're looking at right now when we talk about that transition. And then how would we support that, those that are in the elementary school and those that are in the middle school? And how, what would that transition look like? Then we will bring in, we're going to bring in other departments, we're going to bring in some parents to talk about that. So, right now, as it's just being developed, it's building personnel and district personnel with future forward of getting feedback from others.
Just a point of clarification. Sorry, just a point of clarification moving forward to, for, again, for our benefit as we look at budget allocations on page four. Under what's going well and what's not going well, we again have a instructional coaches and teachers who received more than 10 hours of professional learning. But under what's not going well, time for professional learning for our leaders and teachers. And so, what are the hours? Like, what are we, 10 hours is good, but we want more? Is that the, and then sort of how do we, how do we get it? What's the conflict there?
We are in a time-constrained environment. There's always the desire from our teachers and certainly our instructional leaders to have more time. So, we're going to continue again to work with our scheduling team to figure out how do we make the adjustments that are necessary. But we have to invest in professional development for all of our teachers and staff.
And to really tailor it in a just-in-time manner. We're very good at front-loading a lot of the training at the beginning of the year, and we try our best throughout the course of the academic year to be able to intersperse that. But what we want to be able to do is arm schools, and by extension, entire cohorts of schools, with the kind of real time in response to what we're seeing in the instructional trends, the training, so that we can be responsive.
And then I wanted to just talk about some of the what's next because many of these what next and responses to the data are things that we're planning or working to get started now to impact the winter data, right? Things like the co-teaching model and reallocating funds to get more co-teachers is more future-forward. So, that's something that we're looking at and we're talking about across departments. And we'll look at the winter data as well, but it's not something that we would put in place to impact the winter data.
Okay.
That's, I just wanted to say that, you know, when we were building this, we were thinking of long-term for sure, but also what were some short-term things that we wanted to look at. And that one in particular would be more for next year, thinking about how we would plan that and how we would staff it.
I appreciate that clarification. My last future-focused question is how, how could we expect to see these, these next steps, continued actions show up in our budget conversations? We're having our first budget conversation this evening. What can we expect to see moving forward in order to continue this progress?
As an executive cabinet, we are having those conversations with our CFO. And certainly, our commitment is to make sure that we are really relentlessly focused on teaching and learning as we think about reallocating resources. So, you're likely to hear those, you'll hear some of that in tonight's conversations, but you'll certainly hear them in the future budget conversations.
Board colleagues, any additional questions? So, hearing what Kelly's just shared about those next steps, I would ask my board colleagues if they would like to entertain a motion to approve? Or is this something that, are you wanting?
I wonder if we should just approve discussion of the item? So, if I make the motion for approval, then we'll have discussion after that?
Yep.
And at that point?
Okay. And I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. So, we'll move forward with deciding whether we, as a board, accept the monitoring report, may have a motion and a second to approve item D1. We will still have an opportunity should people want to amend that.
Martirano, so moved?
Dix, second.
We have a motion by Martirano and a second by Dix. Any discussion, or does anyone have questions? And I think this is where we can elevate the conversation.
Would it be a good idea to table this until, so we can put the correct data into the report and then, and then vote on it, vote to receive it or approve it?
The request would be that Kim and I think others have identified specific things that weren't acknowledged in the report. And if indeed they are a strategy that is designed to have the team be held accountable to, then that should be reflected in the report. And I think co-teaching was one.
A systemic analysis of our, how we're serving our students with IEPs.
Persistent.
Because ideally, the reports are really designed to, for you to say, this is what's not going well. This is what we're going to do about it, and it's articulated with some type of time-bound specificity. And I think that is what seems to be.
Yeah, and we do have our coaches on the line. So, if anyone would like to offer any guidance on best practice around this, that would be appreciated as well.
This is actually part of the conversation that we'll be having at the superintendent's invitation next week with the staff.
Okay, with that... I would find it really helpful if the staff would just add in these points. I don't think it has to be much, just put it down because it does help us. It's a continued conversation, right? And so, whether it works or it doesn't work, or you all come back in winter and say, hey, we scratched these strategies because we're already seeing a lot of traction, so we're not going to go to co-teaching. Just helps us to kind of know what you're thinking. So, if you wouldn't mind just adding in a few of these things that you're thinking about to queue up the next conversation, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Point of clarification, so was the motion on the table to accept the report contingent upon adding these other pieces or to not accept the report?
I think what we would do at this point is we'd amend it, we'd table it, and then it'll come back to us, potentially in the form of a report that would be on consent. And then if people find that it's not sufficient, then we pull it from consent and discuss it. So, it's basically sending it back, asking them to make those revisions. They'll put it on consent for the next board meeting, which is the 10th, and assuming the board is comfortable with it, then it'll stay in consent and we'll vote on it without discussion.
Can I ask a clarifying question around that? So, if it's something that might be ongoing conversations, like you were saying, Ms. Knox, that we could indicate that in here, that we're starting the, you know, we would indicate in here that it's not something that might be completed this year, but it's starting the conference.
Yeah, or even, yeah, just something that, you know, we're diving into as possible root cause analysis.
That's helpful.
Or we're digging into deeper to better understand this concern.
That's helpful.
Strategic, short-term tactical.
Yep.
That works.
Okay.
That'd be great.
And if anybody wants to follow up and have...
I'll fire an email your way with just a few that I heard.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you so much, board. Much appreciated.
So, with that, is there a motion to amend this with the language that we are tabling item D1?
I move we table D1.
Second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Martirano. Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved 7-2-0. The next item on our agenda is an update on our Goal 3 from our superintendent and team. Dr. Roberts, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly want to call forth Dr. Lindin, Dr. Carlisle, and...
And Dr. Brown.
Dr. Brown is not, Tasha Brown.
There she is right there.
Is hiding.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Roberts. We're pleased to be able to bring to you an update as of November on the work of Diploma Plus under the auspices of Goal 3. And I want to thank you for the push that this, that this board issued last month to more clearly outline not only the specific actions that are being undertaken, but the scope of them. I hope what you'll see today and hear from my colleagues and I are that there is exciting work happening to be able to make Diploma Plus a point of pride for this district, starting in this coming year, and that it can be part of a larger effort to really change the trajectory of a great number of our students. So, we're excited to be able to present that to you. In the documents that you were issued with the meeting, you should have received a five-page project breakdown, Gantt chart, that outlines across multiple domains where we are with our year-long timeline, as well as today's presentation materials, which I will review. And then with my trusty support of Dr. Carlisle and Dr. Brown, we'll hopefully be able to answer any questions that you might have about where we are going and looking to get to before our next update, likely in January. So, our objectives here today is to offer historical context on how DNPS leaders are utilizing Goal 3 as a platform for lasting transformation of district academic and extracurricular offerings, to illustrate how Diploma Plus would work in practice within DNPS. And we're pleased to offer additional details today on exactly how that would be executed, and then outline the specific timeline and activities that will produce the final Diploma Plus model. the specific timeline and activities that will produce the final Diploma Plus model and lead to district-wide implementation. So again, a reminder that the Diploma Plus work came as a result of the passage of Goal Three in May of this year, in which this board asked for an increase in the percentages of students demonstrating future-ready indicators that would ensure their readiness to either enroll, employ, or enlist. And so that has been our guiding charge since beginning this work roughly five months ago. We start this work with a tremendous amount of humility and drive because this is our current reality. Right now, our four-year graduation rate across DNPS for the class of 2023 was 72.2%. We know that there are students that can and should be increasing that total to a far higher number, where national averages are in the high 80s. And across our different student populations, we should be able to reach a far higher level of achievement across our pre-K through 12 continuum. But this 72.2% number is so boring for us and is what's keeping us driven to push for a model that we believe will hopefully not only engage a greater number of students in the long-term pre-K through 12 journey, but will set them up for success in graduation and beyond. With our ambitious aim now being 100% graduation rate, four-year graduation rate, with those students earning distinctions, we're under no illusion about the fact that this is a tremendous leap that we're looking to make. It won't be overnight. But we do want to change the trajectory of what we believe to be possible within Des Moines Public Schools in regards to how students are not only set up on a pathway to graduation, but how they're able to earn specific distinctions along the way that will set them up for success in college, the professional workforce, or military service. So as we posed back in September, the question that we've been grappling with is how we leverage our intentional selection of academic coursework and instructional pathways to dramatically increase that likelihood of students to enroll, employ, and enlist, as well as to be successful in doing so, with the answer being to transform the DNPS student academic and extracurricular experience into one in which course and activity offerings allow them access to explicit pathways that promote meaningful learning, content tailored to their specific interests, and ultimately recognition for distinction in their educational pursuits. Again, we've shared these examples with you before. This is for the benefit of those who have not already heard about the Diploma Plus concept. But in short, we know that if a student has AP or dual credit sitting in their back pocket, they're more likely to use it. If they've earned an industry accreditation, they're more likely to want to graduate to be able to employ it in the workplace. If they've earned a seal of biliteracy, they're going to be more likely to utilize those skills in their collegiate or professional endeavors. And for those that have committed to a post-graduation goal of military service, that they're far more likely to maintain a commitment to their academic studies. Diploma Plus has hinged on the idea that if we set up students with those goals and those benchmarks early, it not only increases the likelihood of them graduating, but of achieving some of those additional feats along the way. So the question we posed you before, what if those achievements became an explicit objective for students throughout their pre-K through 12 academic studies, which could then be formally recognized in conjunction with their high school diploma? This is the thinking behind Diploma Plus. I won't take too much of your time with the what is, because we've talked about this before, but this is the general framework for how we're looking to use formative experiences such as internships, industry accreditations, dual credit, AP, biliteracy, et cetera, in order to not only set up students for distinctions with their diplomas, but to set up a greater number of students on those educational pathways. So the objectives are to enhance student engagement and achievement across all phases of the pre-K through 12 continuum, to provide a diverse range of pathways to college and career readiness through formative experiences and engaging instructional and professional activities, and to foster critical thinking, creativity, and love of lifelong learning across all stages of the pre-K through 12 continuum. As we've shared with you before, there's a couple of components that are critical to that: academic rigor, career and technical education, personal development, and that this occurs throughout the pre-K through 12 journey, that this goal of high school graduation and beyond doesn't just take root in high school, but becomes a fundamental part of the entire academic journey that DNPS students undertake. The benefits that we've shared with you before, for students, for schools, and for the community, are numerous, going so far as even a reduction in generational poverty, which we believe can be fostered by increasing the likelihood of fostering a greater number of students who are enrolling, enlisting, or going into employment based on the tools that we offer them within DNPS. So in order to bring Diploma Plus to DNPS, we've looked at this work in a couple of different phases. And today's presentation will provide additional details on our efforts throughout phases one and two. One was the needs assessment, specifically what skills and qualities do our graduates need as they enroll, employer, and list. We needed to work backwards with a profile of what the DNPS graduate should be armed with in order to identify those seminal experiences that will set them up for success beyond graduation, and what specific activities or academic endeavors are most likely to foster that success. And then phase two goes into curriculum development. So how does our proposed model align with state standards, university requirements, and industry expectations? At our last meeting, Mr. Dix asked a really great question about how we're consulting with the relevant partners out there, whether they be businesses, whether they be universities, whether they be in the community. And we're going to spend a little bit of time today talking about how we're doing just that in order to set up a curricular model that is responsive to what those partners are looking for. So in order to be able to say, we know that we're setting up students on a pathway with the Diploma Plus program where the experiences that we offer them and that we include as formative are truly setting them up for success as future-ready, ready to enroll, employer, and list. We sought about building a portrait of a graduate. And we did so using data not only collected by this board in their own interactions with the community, but in our own work in our interactions with families, with educators, with community members. And we came up with our Diploma Plus Portrait of a Graduate that is brought down to six core qualities that are guiding our work on how we should go about designing the kind of experiences that will set up our graduates for success beyond our K through 12 experience. Those six qualities, I'm sorry, throwing a button there, are resilient, self-sufficient, empowered, intellectually curious, socially conscious, and civically engaged. We start with resilience. And where we've, through the course of this research, recognized that students who are resilient recognize and regulate their emotions, and they embrace change with confidence and perseverance. We've seen how our graduates that demonstrate that quality are set up for success in the workforce and college or in their own service endeavors. And we want to be able to replicate that in future generations of graduates at an even higher level. Next is self-sufficiency. We know that students who are self-sufficient manage their time, resources, and responsibilities. They set personal goals and monitor their progress, and they balance independence with collaboration. We then move on to empowered students, and that the students who are empowered can confidently voice their ideas and opinions and perspectives, knowing they can make a difference, using their strengths and talents to shape their future, making informed choices that align with their values and long-term goals, and advocating for equity and fairness, challenging discrimination and bias in all forms. That takes us to intellectually curious, that we know that our students who are intellectually curious pursue learning opportunities to expand their understanding of skills, whether they do so in a post-secondary environment or within their own workforce or within their branch of military service, that they explore diverse perspectives to deepen their knowledge of the world, and they evaluate information from multiple sources to develop a well-rounded understanding, taking risks, embracing failures, and envisioning possibilities to generate original ideas and solutions. Next, we look to students to graduate socially conscious, who seek to understand how to appreciate diverse perspectives and experiences, who stand up for others to ensure that marginalized individuals and groups have opportunities to succeed, and who build meaningful relationships across cultural and social differences. And finally, we look for graduates who are civically engaged, who are ready to actively participate in their communities, contributing to the local, national, and global initiatives, who understand their rights and responsibilities as members of society, and who advocate for social justice, working to create positive change in their communities and beyond. So we bring those six qualities together. And we're fortunate in that as we talk with our teachers, as we talk with our campus leaders, as we talk with our community partners, these values and these qualities are shared and embraced by those who work with DNPS schools. And those individuals and external parties want to see them cultivated with passion and perseverance across all of our schools. Now the question is how we go about doing that systematically through the design of a program that sets them up with the specific activities or experiences that are uniquely equipped to put them on that pathway. So using the DNPS profile of a graduate as a guiding resource, the Goal Three Committee has identified an initial group of 11 Diploma Plus distinctions that can go into effect this fall for all DNPS ninth graders. As we've shared with you before, Diploma Plus is something that we want to start in the coming year with an initial group of offerings that are facility agnostic, that regardless of what gets decided in regards to reimagining education, that these can be launched in our schools this next year and can be starting in a conversation across our schools, pre-K through 12, as early as this spring. These first 11 Diploma Plus distinctions do just that, and we believe are great motivators for our students and for our faculty to get students on these paths. Oops, sorry. The first will look familiar because we shared these with you as an initial concept back in September. So for our students who complete 24 college credit hours, and we've got some great resources for that in both Central Campus and Central Academy, as well as dual credit courses that are available at our high schools, they would earn a Diploma Plus distinction of completion of one year of college. We are excited about the idea of expanding the amount of college credit hours that we can be offering throughout our system, not just through AP, but dual credit as well. We had a wonderful meeting this last week with representatives of DMAC around how we can get more of our own DNPS teachers certified to deliver dual credit courses through DMAC. And we found in DMAC an outstanding partner who's going to be able to help us expand that effort in the months and years ahead. Next, you'll see that we've got a Diploma Plus distinction for an earned industry-recognized certificate or credential. And this is, of course, an area that Central Campus has done a fantastic job in over the years in setting kids up with work-ready credentials and certificates that they can utilize in their plans. Now, we want to make it cool to have that certificate or credential and have that be something celebrated as they walk across the dais for their graduation. Third, and this is one that we've put more meat on the bone than we shared with you back in September, is a demonstration of college readiness, namely that our students, whether it be on the ACT or the SAT, would be meeting all college readiness benchmarks on either of those exams, particularly for those who are going on to a college track. So you can see what those minimum scores would look like on both the ACT and the SAT. If students would accrue that, that would automatically become a Diploma Plus distinction that would be recognized within their graduation. These next three are ones that we're particularly excited about and that are new to what we're sharing with all of you. The first is what we call the CTE concentrator, where a student who completes four or more semester-long courses in a single CTE program area with A or B grades would earn a specific distinction for their CTE concentration. So students who find a passion for a career or technical education area and see that through, through four courses, would be formally recognized for that and be far more likely to apply those CTE-ready skills as they graduate and move into the workforce. The next is for our students who demonstrate military intent. And so for our students who commit to that and see it through in graduation, who've completed the ASVAB exam and earn acceptance into a military branch, they too would earn a Diploma Plus distinction that would be recognized in the course of their final studies. And finally, those students who complete a qualified internship or industry-approved project, and this would take on a number of forms that we can talk about in a little bit, in terms of what this might look like. But we've got students undertaking some dynamic internships now with our local and national community partners. We want to make that something that is exciting for students to not only undertake, but then integrate that into their graduation plans through a Diploma Plus distinction. Next, you'll see what we call a senior capstone project, which would be an approved plan for post-secondary transition. And this is really important for two of our student populations that we want to make sure are not overlooked when it comes to the Diploma Plus model. The first is for our students with, in special education or who have IEPs. Prior to graduating, for students with IEPs going into high school that are more extensive in nature, they undertake planning for what their post-secondary transition will look like in conjunction with special education departments and with academic advisors. We want to make sure that special education students who are on that track can not only be recognized for their readiness to enter the workforce or their future endeavors with the plan in hand, but that that becomes a way to distinguish their efforts. The same holds true for our recent newcomer and arrival students who will be coming into our schools in, say, 10th or 11th grade, who may not necessarily have had the chance to undertake four years of concentrated studies in one of those other distinctions, but who are demonstrating their readiness to be able to go on successfully beyond graduation. And this is particularly important for our English language learners who are acclimate, have acclimated into the Des Moines and US school experience and have shown their readiness to be able to transition into their future-ready plans. We want to make sure that that gets recognized and distinguished within the Diploma Plus model. The next is the seal of biliteracy, so signifying proficiency in two or more languages. And there's some very specific conditions that come with earning the seal of biliteracy. But we know we have a great number of students who, right now, are earning that readiness in two languages, but aren't necessarily getting recognized for it. We know that being biliterate is becoming an even greater commodity in this economy than it has ever been before. I began my career 25 years ago as an educator, as a bilingual fifth-grade teacher, affectionately known as the gringo-bilingual. But it was critical to me, far long ago, that having two languages allowed me to be able to be on the pathway that's allowed me to stand here with you all today. It's even more important now. And we want to be able to incentivize students pursuing that opportunity for biliteracy. Next, and again, this is another new distinction that we've added into the program, is a multidisciplinary Diploma Plus distinction. is a multi-disciplinary Diploma Plus distinction, where students who meet at least two of the four unique criteria, namely completing two AP courses, two CTE pathway courses in a single CTE program area, who earn 12 college credits, or who complete four semesters of fine arts, or participation in four years of an annual theater production, or participation in four years of speech and debate. If they complete two or more of those criteria, they would earn a Diploma Plus distinction for multi-disciplinary achievement. We know that these kind of activities form students who become greater set up for success as they graduate and beyond. And we want to be able to celebrate that and add not only to the richness of fine arts and theater and speech and debate that's going on within our schools, but also encourage students to take academic risks, whether it be in seeking to earn college credits or in pursuing new CTE pathways that they might not otherwise take. Next, again, this is new, is the Silver Cord distinction, which would be in recognition of a completion of 160 hours of volunteer service in a high school. And finally, the last one, we call Performance Excellence, which would be four years of participation in the same sport, JROTC, or performing arts. We are excited about how these 11 distinctions, one, that there's possibility of students earning more than one of them, but that any one of them demonstrates that where students have directed their passions over not just the four years of high school, but preceding it, can lead to them being recognized and incentivized to continue on that path to graduate and beyond. So we actually included a chart here to show the correlation between each of these Diploma Plus distinctions and the criteria of enroll, enlist, or employ. And what we're pleased by is that we've got a solid balance across all three of those categories, so that regardless of what the desired pathway is for the student past those four years, that there are opportunities for them to have multiple options for earning Diploma Plus distinctions. But what this hasn't yet discussed is how we get students to and through Diploma Plus. We want to make sure that the conversation related to getting into these kind of activities or academic courses or extracurricular offerings is one that starts early and that is anchored in those future-ready indicators. So in order to equip students with the knowledge and insights that will allow them to choose Diploma Plus pathways, DMPS will undertake a significant overhaul and expansion of its current model for student academic advising and support in grades seven through 12. This is known as the Individual Career and Academic Plan, or ICAP. We have great ambitions for how the ICAP can be a truly formative process, starting in middle school, for students to see what they can achieve and how they can get there. So beginning in SY2526, all students in grades seven through 12 will participate in the following scope and sequence of personal and professional guidance and academic advising. Starting in seventh grade with career exploration and exploring post-secondary pathways, so that the conversation around what's waiting for them when they get to that graduation point starts at age 13. That's an early point, but it's a critical one, so that they're making informed academic choices for the next six years along the way. You can see that as that scope and sequence continues, the topics become refined as well, so that students go from conceiving what possible pathways they might want to pursue post-graduation to figuring out how they're going to get there financially, how they put their plan into motion logistically, and then what life after high school looks like. I know for me, things like balancing a checkbook and knowing how to manage my own time post-high school was a challenge. And we know that's the case for many of our students as well. So we want that to be a seminal part of the academic advising experience for all of our students beginning in seventh grade. And what we've done here in the deck that we've provided, and I won't read this all off to you, is provided some detail for, starting in the fall of seventh grade, all the way through 12th grade, examples of exactly what those activities and metrics would look like for transformation of the ICAP process. So this ICAP endeavor is one that really excites me. And it's something that I think a lot of school districts across the country should be doing, which is starting that academic advising conversation a lot earlier than when a freshman shows up at high school and says, "Okay, you're now a high school student." That also doesn't prevent our schools from thinking even earlier about what the academic advising conversation looks like. And my job as Chief Academic Officer is going to be in instilling, not just in seventh through 12, but even earlier than that, how we're having conversations with kids about what it means to be future-ready and what sort of academic and extracurricular choices they can be making to get there. We also know that Diploma Plus and reimagining education, which I don't need to tell you all, has been a great deal of effort and passion for a number of members of this community who've participated on the committee, will be working hand in hand. Through the reimagining education process, DMPS will currently be considering prospective signature school models and specialized programs that can be embedded across the pre-K through 12 continuum. As the reimagining education process proceeds with the strategic repurposing of specific campuses, additional Diploma Plus strands will be made available to future classes of DMPS students. Our intention is to be ready to start next year with that first batch of 11. Our hope is, as Diploma Plus becomes even more fleshed out and unique instructional pathways are further expanded across the district, that we can then forge additional Diploma Plus pathways as well across the system. So our next steps, as outlined in the updated scope and sequence that you were presented with in conjunction with this presentation, the Goal Three Committee will continue to pursue an aggressive timeline, not only for finalizing the Diploma Plus model, but also in the following areas. One is stakeholder engagement, internal and external. We have consistent conversations with our partners in academia and in the business community, but we want to have an even more targeted set of conversations with them around their reactions to what they're seeing in Diploma Plus, as well as what our own constituencies within the district are seeing. We had a forum with our high school principals about two weeks ago where we shared with them the genesis of the model. And I'm going to quote Quinn Kelly, our principal at Hoover High School, who said this got her incredibly excited about the future of our district. This was unsolicited, it just made my day. They're excited to see this become a part of their repertoire of options in our high schools. And we know that our middle schools are going to be having a similar reaction. We need to be showing them how to do it. And this is where some of the great people to my left and behind me are going to be critical in doing that. But we want to engage in that ongoing internal stakeholder engagement as well as external, making sure that the Des Moines community knows and is excited about what the prospect of Diploma Plus will look like in our schools moving forward. Again, we'll be working on that continued overhaul and expansion of the ICAP process. And I don't pretend to be the greatest expert on it, though I feel pretty fluent. But Dr. Brown is, and I know as we talk more about ICAP, I know she's going to have a lot to share around how we get there. Next is Goal Three Data Collection and Analysis. We're right now diving deep into the numbers of statistics like how many students we currently have in our schools that have college credits in their back pocket but aren't using them? How many students would be qualifying for some of these recognitions, but right now are not even going on to graduation? Because we haven't set that up as enough of a celebration to be able to see them through on that pathway. We want to be able to have the concrete statistics for where those gaps have been in the past so that we can then be targeted in our outreach moving forward. And finally, calibration of student-facing processes and experiences. We want to make sure that regardless of the middle or high school that a student is enrolled at, that they're having a consistent dialogue around what their future opportunities are going to be, and that we've got consistent processes by which students in our high schools can access these offerings along the way. So with that, I'm going to cede the floor for a bit. We look forward to continuing to update you on our progress. But I'd love to invite my colleagues, Dr. Carlisle and Dr. Brown, to be able, if they would like to add anything more to what we've shared and open it up to any questions that you might have.
I think I'd like to structure how we want this conversation to go. But before, so can you just clarify on the ICAP? Is this a state requirement? Just help us understand what that is so we understand it in the context of state requirements.
Yeah. So the state requirements are that every district has to have a career and academic plan of how are we ensuring that all students starting in eighth grade complete activities and experiences, but more importantly, reflections on those activities and experiences and how it might be influencing them to find their purpose and their passion of a career? And then what is the best post-secondary pathway for that? That then all lives in the individual career and academic plan that each one of our students should have. And there's essential elements for that that deal with helping students engage in self-awareness, helping students engage in career awareness and exploration, as well as post-secondary exploration. Then it's about what is the decision-making that students are engaged in? And how are we guiding and supporting students in doing that? And then the last piece is that financial resource piece, including like fast completion data is all part of our DCAP process for our district.
Thanks. Yeah, and I really appreciate that alignment with state compliance. Probably makes it easier for you, too. So as I was thinking about this, first of all, thank you so much for this presentation. I think we've all been really excited to hear it and appreciate your enthusiasm. We could talk about this for hours, as we all know, because we love this topic. What I'm going to recommend is, let's just go around the table and let's do maybe clarifying questions. We are not going to be able to cover everything tonight. And so what I want you to do, just like we did the last time, we'll capture all of the feedback, send it back to the group. So think about what are the kind of highest and most strategic questions that we want to ask now? And save some of the littler ones, like I know I have a few. I'll just put those in writing afterwards. So who would like to go first?
I'll go first. And this is just kind of a clarifying question. As you were talking about Diploma Plus and the various tracks you can go to, how are they different than like an academic letter or a lettering in a sport? Or the arts? Or are those, do we not do those anymore? Or what does it really mean to have a Diploma Plus in those areas?
I think it's-
And why do we need them in those areas, perhaps?
I think in some ways, there may be overlap. But we really, in particular, for those that are about the performance, want to highlight the persistence and the continued engagement in it. If a student earns a letter, that's great. That doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be the incentive to go on to graduate. And we want to make sure that it's directly tied to the diploma.
I understand. Got it. Thank you.
Clarifying question about the, you said, a significant overhaul of counseling. And then you paired that with consistent dialogue as we put a plan together for high school. Is your vision a four-year plan? As my student is getting ready to go from eighth grade to high school, we're putting a four-year plan together rather than just trying to piece it together every year? Or are we still going to do it the way we're doing it now, which is one year at a time? What's that? Am I understanding that vision correctly?
Thank you for that question. So I want to talk about current state. And there's a new piece of this, actually, this year that we just implemented, starting in seventh grade. So the four-year plan has historically always been generally created in eighth grade. And it lives in a very static database that can't, students go in and put their four-year plan in, and then every single year, they go back into that static database. And that's where we're really just doing the next year. They can never touch it. So with our new SchoolLinks platform, which we are required to have some, you know, college and career readiness platform, ours is SchoolLinks. Students now have like a course planner in seventh grade that we just started implementing this fall, where they now have like a dynamic function to that. So we're just trying that on for the first time so that seventh graders are actually experiencing a four-year plan and what that is. And then in eighth grade, as they continue in this course that we have established in grades six, seven, and eight called the Future Pathways Course, they can go back and they can touch that four-year plan in real time, right? But then we still are able to maintain the static data that we need for course requests, staffing allocations, and those types of things. So moving forward, when we talk about overhauling our counseling system, we've been living in a paradigm where we have expected our counselors to do everything. And it's one of those situations that organizations often find themselves in unintentionally, where if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So when we talk about the overhauling of counselors, our counselors have been solely responsible for knowing and owning the college and career readiness of our students on top of safety, well-being, SEL, intervention, right? All the things, responsive services. We do have data that we've never had before on what are all the objectives throughout the school year that a counselor has to engage with that's required of them? And then how much time would be left for them to have just even an academic advising conversation? And with the caseloads, even though we've reduced them by following the ASCA, which is the National Counseling Model, it only allows for, if they're lucky, a 15-minute conversation with each student. So when we talk about overhauling, we're talking about changing the paradigm of it becomes everybody's business to know the hopes, dreams, and aspirations of our youth, have targeted systems, right? To track and monitor that and to encourage students to reach these additional distinctions, which really, to me, are the way in which students graduate, are those things. So it kind of lifts up that sense of efficacy and gives people something to drive towards. And that it's not just up to the counselors to be responsible for all of these pieces.
Thank you.
So can I give you a tangible next step in that regard? Tasha's group, Tasha and Erin Kruger Cabazos, some others, are working on operationalizing the ICAP, the Individual Career and Academic Plan, with these changes next year with a landing space. So for example, Tasha mentioned, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we have a course, we have a dedicated time with a certified teacher, a small group of students where they're engaging in these activities. We currently don't have that in our high schools. So we're looking for, how do we accomplish this within our current paradigm? What's the desired state? And so you'll see, again, interactions with the counseling team, with the high school team, to figure out what's doable in the short term and what do we want to work toward in the long term.
And I'm sure you were going to say this, but at some point, the family in its many forms and caregivers for our students are involved in these decisions.
And that's where we frankly have been falling short. There is a state requirement that families are engaging with these individual career and academic plans, too. And that's not an expectation that we're currently meeting. So we know a one counselor for every 350 students is not able to have a meaningful connection with families either. So absolutely.
So maybe my follow-up on that is to ask you for the next meeting to come back with something because I think we set a big vision. And the thing that worries me is, I'm just reading one of the responses, that we're going to ask every certified staff member to be involved in this work. There's a difference between asking our staff to be champions and to know the language and be able to talk about and encourage distinction, graduating with distinction. But still, ultimately, I'm not sure who's going to do the work. And so, and Tasha, you probably know this as well, navigating somebody through work-based learning and finding internships and the work it takes to do that is not easy. And so to me, I just, I really want to encourage all of you to come back- to come back to us with a staffing recommendation that seems more realistic because I'm not sure I'm hearing, like, do we have to add career counselors? People that actually know how to connect people to work-based learning opportunities in the community? So I think there's a culture of like graduation with distinction, which you want all of your educators and staff to embrace. But I'm actually really curious, who's going to do this with all of the students? Because it, whose job is it? And I'm not sure I have an answer for that yet.
You don't. And if you'll, if you'll take a look actually on page, oh, sorry, no page numbers on this. One, two, three. Actually, when we talk about student experience, that is what we're working on now. It's the Student Experience Process Articulation Processes for ICAP and Academic Advising. I mean, we know that that could be a short-term, long-term conversation, particularly as we continue to navigate feedback from our high schools and figuring out, you know, again, what's doable next year versus with a longer runway. We could have, you know, two years out, three years out, et cetera. So that is on our list and we certainly could bring that to you. But there is a fairly long runway on getting all those nuts and bolts worked out.
Or with community partners, Madam Chair, who are standing, waiting for somebody to say to them, how, you know, how can we dive in? So I think that'd be the other way.
There's a couple of the items that you, one of the things that I'm missing kind of as a whole umbrella is the data to show that what you're recommending is, has been successful and the research to show that this is the right steps to take. And nowhere, I don't think that have we seen that data to show that this is the right path that we're headed down. There's a couple of items in the Diploma Plus program that you're recommending that are not items that are student outcomes. A student participating in four years of a sport or JROTC or performing arts is not about what a student knows or is able to do. So I would struggle to support one of these, these items that are not considered student outcomes. And the other, I would just need some clarification regarding that senior capstone approval plan. It sounds like a final project, so it could be. But it's not articulated in a way that it's actual, it sounds like it's completion of a project versus mastery of a skill. So I worry about those two items and I too had questions around counselors. I have notes around what comes off their plate, crisis, mental health, scheduling, small groups. The ratios are already not good. So I echo Pat and Jackie on that. So thank you.
Can I speak specifically to the Senior Capstone Project? Because I do think there might be a little bit more definition that's required. We currently have a four-plus program for our students. Some of our students with IEPs, certainly not all. The Approved Post-Secondary Readiness Plan, and Susan Hope is a part of our team, is specifically for those students and involves some pretty tight processes for participating in our four-plus programming, but then transitioning to employment and independent living or group living beyond high school. So when we talk about that one in particular, we're talking about a pretty small slice of students with a protocol that currently does work. Now, in the imagineering phase of some of this last spring and in considering some of the research from the National Post-Secondary Institute, we did look at some different models that involve a senior capstone project. In fact, I think we called it future launch or future set, future ready in the, you know, early years of high school, future set, you know, kind of as that launching point. That's certainly not developed, but could be a down-the-road option that would require quite a bit more definition, for sure.
Can we go back to Kim's question? I apologize if it was answered around the data because Diploma Plus is not unique to DMPS. Portrait of a Graduate is not unique to DMPS. So can you speak to data that has actually shown that something like this works, models like this work?
We can speak to it anecdotally.
Well, and I was actually going back and looking in my, in my old files from some previous work from the National Post-Secondary Institute because some of the things, like specifically the one you lifted up around participation in a, in a sport, for example, for all four years. There are some data to indicate that in sort of that bucket of life readiness. You know, I think when we had some early conversations about this, Jackie, you know, Maria, when, with the two of you specifically early on, we talked about, you know, college ready is great, career ready is great, military, you know, great. But there's also a bucket of skills that we sort of lovingly lump into that life readiness. You see some of those certainly in our Portrait of a Graduate. You see some of those, those skills and those things manifesting there. But there are data to show that students who commit to something, you know, for four successful, or four consecutive years, you know, have some of that increased resilience, have some of that connectedness, so talking about some of our social, emotional, can advocate for themselves, things like that. So, you know, I do completely understand and respect where you're coming from and we could dig and find some of those sources that we, you know, we used. But there's definitely anecdotal data. There's also actually, you know, some hard data coming out of the National Post-Secondary Readiness Institute and some of their partners to support why we would include those as part of a robust slate. The other thing with Diploma Plus is it's not a one-and-done. You know, we would encourage that graduation is the floor. That's the floor. All of the Diploma Plus options are a ceiling and there's certainly no cap on, you know, any number of them. We are, one last comment and then I promise I'll stop talking. But part of what we've recognized in building this plane, right, is that we don't currently collect data on a lot of these outcomes. I have to give all the credit to the assessment data and evaluation team. Bridget Schumaker in particular is working to help us assess current state with respect to these various options and has already identified additional data that we will need to collect, input, et cetera, to give us a more robust picture of how many, what percent of our graduates, the 72.2% of students that graduated in 2023 actually achieved one or more of these indicators. And the percentages are quite low.
And thanks, if I wasn't clear, I meant just more broadly. There are institutions, I'm sure, that have deployed this, these programs. And is there some longitudinal data that shows it works?
Yes, we'll be glad to bring that to you at the next update.
Particularly large urban.
We actually have a meeting with Kansas City right after the holidays. So we will certainly pull their data because they have a pretty impressive trajectory and look for others as well.
But Kim, what's interesting about your comment is that our community told us this is what they wanted loud and clear, which is how we make our goals and guardrails. So we are responding to what our community asked us to do. And some of those are soft skills. And so this is a dilemma that I think everyone is struggling with. What we heard from our parents and our students is that those soft skills are not being developed. And what we're talking about with some of this stuff is soft skills. And so I hear what you're saying about measurement. And I, this is like an age-old problem is how do you measure soft skills? In a reliable way, in a fair and reliable way. But I think that's a challenge that we could look at as we do this and try to come up with some measures that tell us we're doing the right thing for kids as they graduate and producing this model of a graduate.
I want to make sure that we hear from everybody. So who has not spoken? And please do.
Yeah, so first I'll say thank you for doing this. You, at a previous meeting, we shared some feedback. And I know the feedback I shared around transferability of skills was certainly considered as you built this out. And to the, to the framework around other things that exist like this, America Succeeds offers a very similar framework of competencies for graduates. And there are, within your Portrait of Graduates, a lot of alignment. So I would say I think it's right on target. The one question that I do have is around the students being able to articulate the value of the distinction. I looked within your timeline for the seventh through 12th grade. And maybe it's implemented or considered within the life-after-high-school piece. But unlike graduating as a valedictorian, salutatorian, a letterman jacket holder, whatever it is, that are more recognized nationally or maybe regionally, to be able to say I graduated with distinction because of any of the 11 that are going to be available in the fall, the real value comes in being able to articulate that to the employer, the college admissions officer, or the military officer that's recruiting. So I didn't know if that was of consideration within the process, but I would love to throw that out of this feedback if there is.
It is. And it's one where we have a job as a district, not only to be having those conversations with business, with our post-secondary partners around what that value is, but also arming our students with the communication skills around how they can convey why this is important and valuable to them. We will have a job to do in working within the culture of DMPS to make it cool to be a Diploma Plus graduate. And we know that that's doable, but it's going to take a concerted effort, not just by a couple of academic advisors or a couple of principals, but the entire DMPS community rallying around the fact that we're trying something ambitious and that students are demonstrating exceptional effort in doing so.
Thank you. Well done.
Dr. Lundin, you're going to have to spend some more time in our middle schools because making it cool is no longer. You don't have the riz, my friend.
Well done.
Is the vernacular dope? I think that's what it is. We can talk, Dr. Lundin.
Yeah, I appreciate the help.
Someone referenced earlier including families in the process. And I, I think that it's a great thing that, you know, we're doing this. And I don't think that it should only be something that we do as a community within DMPS, but also the, the general Des Moines community, right, including our families. So I'm interested in how this information is going to be disseminated in a way that families are able to understand it so that they can be supportive of their students.
Can I talk about something currently that just happened? So the ICAN curriculum, which is basically like College Access Network, they, we have been doing virtual sessions. The Future Ready Coaches from the high schools in partnership with some of our community partners have been having virtual series. And we have also been having those series in Spanish. In fact, we just had one last week. And so we are pulling in people to try to make it more accessible. We're thinking about, you know, sometimes the language barriers for some of those things. I also want you to know that we have a draft form of pathways that is going to be going in front of a lot of the career and tech ed teachers. It doesn't include core, but it does say if you're interested in health sciences, here's different occupations that might be of interest to you. Here's what courses are available at your home high school. And then here's what courses are available at Central Campus. And then we list out from beginning, intermediate, to advanced coursework, what opportunities they have for that. And so us getting better at marketing this in a way that is even like visually appealing, not just like a whole bunch of text on handouts and websites and things like that. And so there is a marketing aspect to this that I think that we're getting much better at so that when we go into the communities, right, where we have families come and engage with us in our buildings, we are more strategic in how we're making that information accessible for all of our families.
So this is going to be a partnership with a whole lot of colleagues in the district. Phil Rader already knows he's going to be on call for how we communicate this. But so do our bilingual family liaisons, who are going to be sharing this with families and our success workers and our community school coordinators. And administrators are going to be playing a fundamental role in conveying to families why this is important and what their student can achieve out of it.
Other questions?
I do have questions, but I'm just going to email them. I think that will be easier for me. But thank you for this presentation. I just want you to keep in mind our, I was looking at the portrait of the graduates. And I'll send in the email, but just keep in mind that, you know, we, I think we need to look at our most needed students. So I'll send all an email.
Are you referring specifically to some of the human skills? Or just making sure to target each population?
Yes, just to make sure to target each population.
I am going to ask a question that I think many of us have gotten inquiry about. And it's, it's interesting because I am the proud mom of two people who have decided to serve in the military as their career. But we've gotten a lot of questions from people about the decision to use the words enroll, enlist, equip. I might be saying them in the wrong order. And, and I think part of that is potentially because of historical push for specifically young men of color to enlist, at least that's part of it. I think some of it is that there's maybe a promotion of, like, I don't know, like a military kind of pro-war culture. And so I guess I just want to put it out there. We've gotten feedback on it. I know we talked about it. We actually had a really interesting conversation about it early on in a retreat about this topic. And so can you just provide how you got to those three words? And just talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
So enroll, enlist, employ actually isn't, it's not DMPS original. It's not Tasha round original. And those are just, those are the pathways. I mean, even when you look at like post-secondary research, those, those are the buckets that help people maneuver and navigate the transition from high school to their future career adult selves. The reason that, and I guess I want to just first address that the concern around militarization, pro-war culture, whatever, those are opinions, right? And part of this framework is that we actually don't, as educators and as an institution, we're no longer saying this is what it means in order for you to be successful as a parent or this is what it means in order for you to be successful as a student, AKA college only. So while I respect people having their opinions, this is about providing increased targeted specific opportunities based on the interest of our families and our students, right? And making sure that they know what opportunities are available to them and they choose. This isn't about us choosing anymore. That's actually what we want to stop doing. The other part of that is, is I think that there is just a misunderstanding, and rightfully so, as to why some choose this pathway. There are things that are vitally important to our community, including naturalization and citizenship. That's an opportunity for some of our students. When you go to, you know, a career fair in Des Moines Public Schools and the military is there, there's a specific branch that actually wears civilian clothing when they come to our career fair because they're there to represent their career. And they're sharing with kids how the military helped them get their licensure or how it helped them travel the world or how it helped them engage with people from different cultures. So, you know, there's all of these benefits that while some people might not agree with those, at the end of the day, this is about choice in our school district, which ultimately is going to make us a district of choice. Something else in related to the military that when, you know, people raise, you know, their concerns, I actually would invite people to come and take a look at our JROTC program. It does not push military. It is literally a leadership and personal development course. And the service learning that these students do and the engagement that they have in giving back to their communities and learning about what they have to contribute and how they can impact their community, their country, and the world is evident when you attend those courses. So I think that it is crucial in this work that we do not assign value to pathways that we provide all opportunities to all students and at the end of the day, they choose. But they're not, not choosing college because they can't. They're not choosing college because they can, they just choose another pathway, if you will. So I also want to make sure that that's another part of the paradigm that could be changed as a result of this work.
If I could add on to that, let's say hypothetically, we did just have enroll, employ. We know that a significant conduit either into college enrollment or employment is the military in the first place. And I say this as somebody who has a brother whose military service led to his enrollment in what ultimately became a law degree and a business degree. It became the pathway that allowed for that. It became the pathway that allowed for that. And so we have a choice as a community, as Tasha puts so well, of either acknowledging the choices that our students are making and tying that to graduation and achievement, or leaving that in a vacuum and pretending that it doesn't exist.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And I think just this is really good for us to think about, how to talk to our community about it as well. Did you have a follow-up, Ms. Mariano?
I do. I, sorry. Go ahead, Maria. I appreciate your comments, Tasha, but I think you talked a lot about this is a student's choice, this is a student's choice, and we are not playing a role in their choice, we're just giving opportunity. Well, we've historically not given everyone access and opportunity. We've historically not, we've historically had implicit bias, and we all have implicit bias. And we're not, we have seen at this board table in monitoring reports that we, as an institution, are not providing the same access to all of our students. And we can sit here and talk about growth mindset and talk about changing mindset, but the reality is, is right now, we're not there yet. And believing that everyone is capable and giving everyone access to every possible pathway is not yet there. So I think we're working towards getting there, but what you just spoke about is not the current reality, and we need to be cautious of, of choice versus opportunity and access and the implicit bias and lack of growth mindset that exists in our, in our district.
This is a great conversation. I just want to say, I think, I know we need to move on, but I do think it's important. So I don't want to move on without saying this conversation should continue to take place because I think that will be a question that people have is around access to opportunities. I do want to see if there's any other questions. Maria.
It's not a question.
I don't have any questions. No, you said any question?
Any comments, Maria? Any comments? Thank you. I disagree with you. I'm sorry. Every, everyone is entitled to an opinion. And you spoke in a way that it's almost not okay for people to have their opinion and express it. Considering the population that we have in our district, we have many families that come from war-torn countries that want nothing to do with the military, that have lost everything, that have been uprooted. And I am, we are all about choices. That's great. What Kim, sorry, Ms. Mariano, has shared is true. Not everyone has been given the opportunity. And it's important to realize that. I think that it's easy for us to say, to speak of this, that we're trying to do. It's, it sounds really good. But the reality for a lot of our families is that a lot of times it's, it's your said then done, right? Yes, military will give people maybe the pathway to acquiring an immigration status, probably not necessarily naturalization immediately, but they will have, yes. But to someone who comes from a country that, with horrible history, maybe they don't want that. And I think that we have to be conscientious when we sit at these spaces because these are very privileged spaces. Unless we have been in those shoes, we cannot really say, this is the way it is. So I just want to offer, please be conscientious of the people that we have in the district and the families that come through our doors every single day with so many painful experiences. I hope that we realize that the choices that we offer, great, great, we're all about choices, great, that's great. But please do not speak in a tone where, because it sounded, it came with a lot of authority. If anyone wants to bring their opinion, then I invite them to come to an ROTC program. Okay, then have we tried to open the doors to the ROTC program to these families intentionally? I don't think we have.
If I may, no, Tasha, thank you. Madam Chair, if I may? One, I appreciate this conversation. It's spirited, it's the kind of discussions we need to have from this table and interacting with the team here. Board Member Mariano and Alonso Diaz, I, Alonso, I value exactly what you share. Thank you for sharing that. But let me also offer three things. One, as a district, we are fully aware of the gaps that exist around our cultural competence. Even as a black man, I understand that I too show up sometimes with implicit and unconscious biases. And so we are in the process of actually moving towards a district-wide investment in culturally responsive training to move us along the continuum from being consciously destructive to culturally competent. Secondly, I want to commend the team, certainly, I want to specifically highlight what I've seen here at Central Campus coming out of Tasha Bragan and team. Probably within my first 30 days in this role, I sat in that conference room and looked at some historical context around what Central Campus used to be, how exclusive it was versus some intentionality around increase in diversity. And so we are a work in progress. We know where we need to be. And thirdly, I certainly want to share that given our cultural and linguistic diversity, I will stop at nothing to ensure that we are investing considerably in moving the needle on developing individual building capacity so that we are not acting in a unconsciously destructive way that impacts our families that have been historically marginalized, that impacts our students that have been historically marginalized. And so what I heard from the board tonight is a push for us to get better at how we're showing up, valuing differences and doing it in such a way that we're elevating our students, their families and their lived experiences. And so I appreciate that. Please continue to push us in this regard and know that very shortly, we're going to come to the board with a request to support our endeavor around building cultural competence in every single employee who works in the district. I just wanted to offer that. So thank you all. And team, thank you for the presentation tonight.
Very much. Thank you for the presentation, board. Thanks for the feedback. I will be asking for feedback from everybody afterwards so we can gather that together and share it with Dr. Roberts and the team. With that, I'm going to make a recommendation, which is we are going to take a five-minute break. So if people need to use the restroom, they can use the restroom. We have a lot to talk about, but I think I also want to just let people take a five-minute break. So board members, five minutes, then we'll come back and we will move on to item D3.
D3.
Skylar, come back up here. Say hello. Okay, if we could have Skylar and Jenna come back up, that would be great. Skylar, come on back up. We are going to get started. We have quorum.
What does that mean?
We can start. Oh, it's there. There's never going to be a good time for it. We are now going to turn to monitoring report goal one, which was monitored during our last work session. We will now decide whether we, as a board, accept the monitoring report. May I have a motion and a second to approve item D3? So again, just a motion and a second to then move to discussion.
No, second.
We have a motion by Alonso and a second by Knox. Is there any discussion or does anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, after our monitoring conversation at the last meeting and after reviewing the monitoring report in more detail, I myself cannot at this point justify accepting the report at this time. As a board, effective goal monitoring requires kind of clear alignment between that community vision, the community's vision for student outcomes and the current reality to our student performance. And the report just didn't adequately, adequately, pardon me, demonstrate first sufficient growth towards the goal that we set, a clear understanding of the root cause and the challenges that, that we faced or that was reflected in the data, and in my opinion, an aggressive or strategic plan for addressing the challenges that exist. And as a board, I feel that in order for us to ensure that monitoring efforts are effective, we need to hold, we need to hold ourselves accountable to our priorities that we've set for our students and our community. Accepting this report without the critical elements that I've described really undermines our responsibility and what we have set forth for our community to be, they demand clarity, effective strategies that will lead us to these measurable improvements for student outcomes. And I know that it's there. I know that we have it. I know that in our winter monitoring, we are going to have a much clearer understanding of the, of the strategy and of the data. And I know that, that Ian, Dr. Roberts, you will revisit our next monitoring report and have that necessary depth that I, I think I and the rest of the board desire to see in this goal monitoring report. So I will not be supporting this or accepting this particular approval at this time, of report at this time.
Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I would just build off of what Ms. Mariano said in that, you know, I think success can't come without some reflection on where we fall short. And I think this is a way for the board in the district to communicate about that and to level set on what the expectation is and, and the urgency of where, where we want to go. So I think, I think I would agree with Ms. Mariano that I'll be voting not to accept this monitoring report as well.
And my one ask, board members, prior to taking the vote, is that if Dr. Roberts should request specific feedback on the report and what specifically it was lacking, some things were identified already, I know there were others that were discussed, please provide that feedback directly to Dr. Roberts. Is there any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Madam Chair, if I may, certainly, in the spirit of continuous improvement, the team and I stand ready to go back to the drawing board and strive toward exemplary. So I'm requesting that the board provide specificity around what you would like to see. And I'm happy to come back with an exemplary board report. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we'll move to vote to accept this report. Okay, so the vote is, the report is not accepted with a vote of seven to zero. Okay, and now we move to the consent items. So we will now move to consent. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with a speaker. the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with a speaker regarding comments made to agenda items. Discussion and deliberation will remain among board members at the board table with speakers' comments informing the board's discussion, deliberation, and determinations as deemed necessary. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers?
None for consent.
Ms. Knox, I believe you have the consent motion.
I do. I move that the board approve the consent items in accordance with the recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $5,305,726.17.
We have a motion by Knox. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Marderano. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next on the agenda are our public hearings. First item is F one, public hearing for B nine two eight four, Lincoln High School parking lot replacement. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to item F one? There are no speakers. Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam. Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by Angelo Architectural Associates for parking lot replacement at Lincoln High School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve item F one?
Motion, Campos.
Second.
We have a motion by Campos and a second by Ms. Marderano. Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is passed, seven to zero. Next item is F two, public hearing for B nine two seven seven, North High School locker room upgrades. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to item F two? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by Angelo Architectural Associates for locker room upgrades at North High School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second? We have a motion by Marderano and a second by Knox. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next item is F three, public hearing for FY twenty five twenty six school calendar. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to item F three? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, please introduce the matter.
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed FY twenty five twenty six school calendar, hold a public hearing, and approve the said calendar.
May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Knox, second.
We have a motion by Marderano and a second by Alonzo. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, six, seven to zero. Next, we move on to our other business. First item is personnel recommendation, receive, file, and action. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board receive, file, and approve the termination of the contracts for reasons stated forth in the superintendent's notice.
May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Alonzo and a second by Marderano. Is there any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next item is G two, request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified allowable growth for projected costs due to increased limited English proficient program expenditures. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board approve the request to the SBRC, the School Budget Review Committee, for MAG, modified allowable growth in the amount of $4,309,952.20 for fiscal year 2024-2025 for projected costs due to increased LEP, limited English proficient program expenditures with increased students beyond five years.
We have a, may I have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
We have a motion by Marderano and a second by Dix. Is there any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next item is G three, request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified allowable growth for increased open enrollment. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board approve the request to the SBRC, School Budget Review Committee, for MAG, modified allowable growth in the amount of $271,921.40 for fiscal year 2024-2025 for projected costs due to increased enrollment.
May I have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
We have a motion by Marderano and a second by Alonzo. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next item is G four, request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified allowable growth for increased open enrollment out. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board approve the request to the SBRC, School Budget Review Committee, for MAG, modified allowable growth in the amount of $4,118,541.10 for fiscal year 2024-2025 for projected costs due to increased open enrollment out.
May I have a motion and a second to accept the superintendent's recommendation? Marderano, we have a motion by Marderano and a second by Alonzo. Any discussions or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next on our agenda are information-only items. H one, board time use evaluation, and H two, FY twenty six downtown school calendar. Now we move to discussion items. First item is I one, district-wide cellphone policy and guidance. I will turn it over to Dr. Roberts for his presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Where should I drive from?
Kyle? There is the power.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you, board and committee. Board, I certainly want to express my appreciation for the opportunity given to the team and I at the last board meeting to go back, revisit where we currently stand and to come up with a proposed cellphone policy and guidance for a district-wide adoption for a future date. Tonight, my goal is to provide a high-level overview for your consideration and certainly for your decision-making. Having consulted with the teammates, particularly district leaders and some of our school leaders, I want to offer that as a district, we are truly excited about the possibility of having a district-wide cellphone guidance or policy. Having done our own set of research, continuing to monitor our current pilot at Hoover High School, and many of us have looked at up-to-date and current data, including having read and digested the contents of the anxious generation. This will drive and inspire our commitment to coming to you to bring forward this proposal. I want to offer that as a district, we recognize that cellphones and personal devices are an integral part of our students' existence, right? They use it for communication purposes. It's a part of their identity. And what we also realize is that based on the data and the research we've seen, there are potential harm that comes to students. And so we want to find a healthy balance between making sure that we value students' decision to have cellphones, give them agency, but to arrive at decisions that will minimize those distractions to them so that they can increase their focus on the instructional programs. Agenda that I want to share with you today to provide a policy overview, share some key guidelines, talk a little bit about our stakeholder engagement, support that we intend to have for teachers and staff, because these are the critical individuals who will be part of the more tactical aspect of the plan. Share a little bit about our implementation plan and proposed implementation timeline, our communication plan, which will be critical to the success. Think about our evaluation and feedback. This is a critical part of our processes as we think about embarking upon complex decisions and certainly entertain questions. The purpose of the policy overview, again, is to make sure that the new cellphone, district-wide cellphone policy will create a balanced approach that truly allows students to benefit from technology, but to do so responsibly, right? We know that there is an inevitability that our students will have access to cellphone and similar, cellphones and similar devices. But ultimately, we want to be able to encourage healthy peer-to-peer interactions and certainly to value their mental health, recognizing and understanding that an overuse of cellphone and screen time can have a negative impact on that current reality. There are four key areas that this proposed policy is intended to offer. One, we want to encourage focused engagement during instructional time. The goal is we should not have students using cellphones during any aspect of the instructional time during the school day. Certainly, we want to reduce distractions for both students as well as teachers. Whenever a student uses a cellphone during the instructional time, not only is it a distraction to that student, it's a distraction to their peers as well as a teacher who, in many instances, may have to stop or interrupt their lesson. The third is we want to be able to inspire students to have, truly have not just a reduction, but a significant reduction in their screen time. And then fourth, we want to be able to promote digital citizenship. And while we know students will have possession of their devices, we want to make sure that we are promoting responsible device use. Four key guidelines. We want to talk a little bit about the permitted use. Our proposal is that students will utilize cellphones before and after school, during lunch, and between classes. And this is proposal number one for consideration. We have seen where this particular approach and framework has been applied not only around the country, but right here in our pilot at Hoover. Also want to bring forward for consideration and look forward to the thought leadership from the board on this and that is for us to consider non-use of cellphones or similar devices for the entire day. So from the first to the last bell, students are not allowed to use their phones during passing times, during transition, or during their lunch periods. We heard from some of our speakers earlier who referenced the importance of this. Classroom expectations. During instructional time, cellphones, eyewatches, and related devices should be silenced and stored away unless a teacher permits use for either educational activities. Because what I don't want to get lost in this is there are a number of teachers who are skilled at utilizing technology of cellphones or similar devices to enhance their pedagogical delivery. So we want to also keep that as an option. There are emergency situations. We talked a little about this at the last board meeting. Students may be able to use their devices to either contact family in emergencies with staff permission, or they may be able to utilize this if there are specific unknown medical reasons why a student should have their device. And finally, the disciplinary measures. The policy or guidance emphasizes an understanding and our correction or focuses on understanding and correction rather than on punishment. I shared at the last board meeting that it is our goal to make sure that we are embracing and elevating more deficit, more asset-based language and refraining from the deficit language, which includes words such as a ban. One thing that stands out to us is that, again, we will have somewhat of a progressive discipline approach, if we may, where repeated violations will involve, again, not repeated punishment, but restorative conversations and parental engagement. Our stakeholder engagement, we intend to make sure that we, again, engage all of the stakeholders who this policy or guidance, once implemented, will impact. That includes students, parents and guardians, teachers, and staff. One sort of key student group that I want to highlight is the Superintendent's Advisory Council. This is a group of students, two from each of our high schools, including our five comprehensive and one virtual high school, who serve as representative for the entire student body of 30,800 students. This is a group of individuals who convene with the superintendent and will soon convene with the executive cabinet and will also make requests to convene with the board on occasion during the school year to share what they believe to be issues impacting students. Parents and guardians, we certainly want to create opportunities, either virtually or in person, to solicit information and get the perspective of many of our parents. We've already heard from many of our parents who come to the board meeting and have shared exactly where their desired outcome is. And so we also want to take that into consideration. Teachers and staff, certainly this will require some shift in the practices of teachers and staff. Our desire and commitment is to ensure that we make this not a burdensome pursuit. And in order for us to do that, to provide opportunities for teachers to receive professional development and guidance around how they should show up when we are going to implement this new policy. That training, resources, and administrative support are all very critical to teachers, staff, and school leaders. This may come in the form of workshops that focuses primarily on effective classroom management, particularly regarding device use and how teachers can integrate technology into their lessons. I know we've already started conversations with a vendor, Twenty First Century Ed, and they are utilizing a platform around the country that I I'm looking forward to having our CIO, CIO, Mr. Schroder talked with them about, and that is it's called AI Pedagogy. And this is where they are inviting teachers and leaders how to consider utilizing technology, technological advancements, including cellphones, to truly embrace and strong instructional delivery model. Resources, I, the team and I will come back to the board once we come up with an implementation plan to determine whether or not we need to reallocate resources. And if so, what would be the purpose of such reallocation? We are not yet anticipating significant financial implications for this policy, but I certainly wanted to be able to name it at this meeting so that we can manage expectations about what is possible. Administrative support, we definitely want to be able to establish a response system where teachers cannot only seek assistance when a challenge arises, and this is inevitable. We want to make sure that we have a solid protocol and system in place that is consistent across the district, certainly allowing for autonomy, bound autonomy in individual schools based on their individual context. That includes where schools are located and grade level band. Implementation plan includes effective communication, education, and monitoring and evaluation. Around communication, we want to be able to share the policy details through emails, newsletter, in-person meetings, and certainly on our DMPS website. And this is not an exhaustive list of our communication strategy, but this is to give the board and community sort of a high-level overview of our thinking. In terms of education, want to be able to integrate lessons on digital citizenship either into the one, some aspect of our curriculum or for us to consider that in our advisory program, which currently exists in some of our middle and high schools. And in terms of monitoring and evaluation, we want to be able to establish a committee that will oversee the rollout and address concerns promptly. That committee will include, again, every single stakeholder group that is impacted, including administrators, teachers, staff, students, and will even seek to have community partners, including parents, be part of the monitoring and evaluation, which will occur during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year and beyond. And you'll see that in the timeline. The timeline that we are proposing is a, the winter twenty-four, twenty-five, which is from November, our current month, through February twenty-five, to continue to draft a policy and build on the initial plan that we've started. In the spring of twenty-five, March to May, we are proposing stakeholder engagement and feedback collection. And that includes all of the stakeholder groups that I mentioned previously. In the summer of twenty-five, that is between June to August of twenty twenty-five, we want to make sure that we are going back based on information and feedback that we would have received to refine our policy, to provide professional development to our teachers and staff, and then to consider whether or not we are looking at a pilot or a full-scale implementation. That implementation would occur in the fall of twenty twenty-five, between September and December. During this district-wide implementation of the new cellphone policy and guidance, again, we will continue to evaluate where we are, looking at every single data point, both qualitative and quantitative, to determine whether or not we need to make tweaks and refine. Then in the spring of twenty twenty-six, January to May of twenty twenty-six, again, take a deep look in partnership with our data assessment and evaluation team at the implementation of the cellphone policy to refine as needed based on that evaluation data. And the refining of the policy is only with the intention to make it stronger. And the refining of the policy is only with the intention to make it stronger and to invest, invest those who are impacted in the decision. The detailed steps are exactly what I just shared in the timeline, and so unless there are questions that comes out of these detailed steps, I'll skip this for, in the interest I want to point out a typo in this slide. The spring 26 district-wide implementation, actually, it's the fall of 25 district-wide implementation. The spring 26 will, is slated there to make sure that we are revisiting and evaluating the implementation.
So to be clear, Dr. Roberts, are you proposing district-wide implementation in the fall of 2025?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Any other comments, Dr. Roberts?
No. Finally, certainly, I look forward to receiving questions against. We want to make sure that we are prioritizing with this new cellphone guidance and the policy, three things. One, valuing the fact that students' lived experiences should include giving them agency. Secondly, to make sure that everyone understands this policy is intended to make sure that we are reducing to the greatest extent possible any reduction or interruption to our instructional practices. And thirdly, recognizing that there are some mental health components, and we want to make sure that in keeping with one of our guardrails, guardrail four, that we are valuing the safety and well-being of not only staff but students. That concludes my presentation, Board.
Thanks, Dr. Roberts. Board members, I think what we'll do is a round of questions first, so clarifying questions that you have with regards to what was presented. Then the second round will be any thoughts or opinions that you'd like to share, and then I think the request will be that we will ask Dr. Roberts to listen to the feedback and then come back in, at the first meeting in January to review the next set of policy recommendations, if that's okay with everybody. Okay, so clarifying questions first.
I'll go ahead and start. Dr. Roberts, in putting this together, what is your feedback from your team on implementing this for fall? Yeah, just that basic question.
Thank you. Board Member Campos, given the short timeline between the last board meeting and this one, I will share with you that while I solicited feedback, the sample, I would not necessarily characterize it as a representative sample, it was a very small sampling of teachers, staff, excuse me, leaders and students, and most of whom, I would say, probably by the 99 percentile have suggested that we should give ourselves a much longer runway and implement the policy district-wide in the fall of 2025. But there is enthusiasm and agreement that we need to have a district-wide policy.
Other questions? What were the concerns mentioned by the people that you approached, Dr. Roberts, about starting it sooner?
Thank you, Board Member Alonso. It was, it was primarily and overwhelmingly, it's a naughty initiative. Many individuals even added a level of specificity to their feedback and pointed out all the big and major initiatives that we have undertaken, including our strategic plan, reimagining education, our goals and guardrails, and they're invested in all of those. And while there was enthusiasm and excitement about a policy implementation, they've asked that we consider, if not the fall of 2025, if there had to be a compromise, that we consider a rollout in the form of an additional set of schools to pilot. But it was certainly considerations around how potentially burdensome this will become.
I could just ask a follow-up on that, and I understand the work that this takes. How is the strategic plan, at this point, reimagining education, how are those actually impacting everyday staff like our teachers and, you know, the kind of associate principals' principals and the group that's actually going to do this? So is that, I'm just trying to understand because I, you know, we'd like to do this as quickly as possible, understanding that you want it implemented with fidelity, which I really respect. So just help us understand the things that wouldn't happen if this was accelerated. It's just helpful to understand the, the choices that you're weighing or how you're thinking about it.
Madam Chair, thank you for the question. The two initiatives I mentioned, the strategic plan as well as reimagining education, they have not been implemented. Both of those are slated to be implemented in the spring of 2025. So there is no telling, and I do not have enough data to determine and predict impact.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Roberts, talk about resources. One of the things that we've heard pretty consistently from Hoover is that the Bell team has been, I mean, just really critical to the success of Hoover. I'm sorry, the radio team, not the Bell team, the radio team. We talk about a smaller student population there, and, and so, you know, we have different buildings. What is your assessment of the resources that would be needed? You didn't, you know, you said we wouldn't need a more, a lot more staff for this. What does that, what does that mean? What does that look like? What would we have to shuffle around in order to make sure that we had the right team in every building to do this, even in the fall?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Board Member Dix. And so if I think about resources that we will need, it would primarily see a focus on personnel. The radio team that you referenced, that includes every administrator in the building. We have set an expectation for all of our administrators, particularly our school principals, to have an investment of no less than 70% of their time on the instructional core. Essentially, what this means is that we expect our principals will spend a lot of time focusing on teaching or learning, providing teachers with feedback, coaching, and development. Every time a teacher has an issue with regards to his cellphone in a classroom and they have to reach out to the radio team, that means a principal or associate principal will have to respond. And every time they have to respond, we're taking valuable time away from their focus on the most important aspect of Des Moines Public Schools' existence, and that is the instructional core, curriculum implementation, what teachers are teaching, what students are learning. And so as I think about the second aspect of your question, and that is what resources will we need, more than likely, we will need additional personnel in the form of staff to support that, and I'm thinking individuals at a level of probably associates who will have to be trained. Our current reality is we have partnered with our talented personnel team, have held a number of resource fears, and the cavalry isn't coming. We are not able to hire that level of employee and staff as yet. So we will have to go back to the drawing board and revisit our strategy around our hiring practices. And so I think that that is potentially a barrier or a challenge when we're not able to have adequate personnel to support the implementation of our district-wide cellphone guidance.
Sorry, can I just ask a clarifying, but don't our, we have restorative justice coordinators, campus monitors, behavioral specialists, they're all part of the team as well, right? It doesn't just fall on the principal and assistant associate principal. Is that right? I mean, is it a broader, I'm just trying to understand the group that actually is needed to implementate?
It's a broader themed, individuals with the most influence who will likely be called upon, right? When students are non-compliant, for example, will be an administrator.
Okay.
Yeah, but here's a broader team, Madam Chair, you're absolutely right.
Other clarifying questions? I want to make sure everybody has a chance to ask any clarifying questions.
So how soon do we get started? If the goal is to start in the fall of 25, how soon do we get started with the planning for that? Like, what do we need to do first?
We will get started as soon as December 2nd. That is, looking for Tim, is that this coming Monday, we'll be having a planning, a committee of individuals, including school leaders, that will start that conversation.
If a, I'm sorry, other questions?
What is an alternative to having personnel do, do most of the work here? Is there, is there a viable alternative, in your opinion, to having an individual come take a cellphone that, that could work? I'm talking about the bags.
The cellphone pouches? I'm not sure, Board Member Dix, if you're asking if the cellphone pouches can replace personnel.
Is that in your mind a, an alternative to having this be so personnel-heavy? If the students were required to just lock their cellphones in their bags, you don't have an opportunity to take the cellphone out?
That's an alternative, absolutely. That's an option. Thank you, that's an option.
And I think just that's under the consideration for permitted use. You did point out students may use cellphones before and after school, during lunch, and between classes, or non-use for the entire day as being.
Is considered. Yes, Madam Chair. So yeah, the non-use for the entire day would probably behoove us to consider pouches.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, then at this point, I think if anybody has other thoughts they'd like to share, any specific opinions or feedback for Dr. Roberts as he and the team are considering the policy.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the presentation before us and it not being an entire day of non-use. I did have an opportunity to speak with a few teachers. The thing is, a policy already exists within most schools. It's not about having a policy, it's about implementation. So when I think of resources, to me, it's training. How do you train the teachers or whoever's going to do this to do it successfully? Because the policy already exists, or a form of a policy already exists. I also spoke with a few students, and one thing that stood out with this group of students in particular was the feedback they gave around adults making decisions for students, which that's, that's how life works. But they shared, and I quote their words, "They don't like when adults demonize their experiences." And for me, that was powerful because we sometimes make decisions based off what works for us because we think it should work for everyone else. So for these students, I, I agree with, I can't remember what point it was in here. I have been teaching class myself for several years, and I actually encourage my students to use their cellphones. There is pedagogical framework, there is value in using technology to advance your learning, advance your instruction, advance your understanding. So I, I share all of that to say I am in favor of the way in which it is currently written to where it is not a full day of non-use, because to me, the biggest skill that comes out of this is discernment. For a student to be able to graduate high school and know when they should be able to use their phone, how to use it to advance them as an adult is more important to me than a student putting their phone away completely. Because at the end of the day, regardless if they choose to go into a job, college, or in the military, there is no specific profession that does not allow for you to use your phone in its entirety of job responsibilities. So by offering something like this, it builds a level of discernment, so students are learning in a safe environment, in which ways can I use my phone to move forward and to actually be an adult post-high school?
Thank you. Other thoughts people would like to share?
I do. So going back, Dr. Roberts, what you said about resources and staffing. As a parent, so I'm going to be try to kind of transparent right here, I did struggle with this cellphone limitation, but honestly, it starts at home. I think as our students are asking for this, a lot of our parents are, we as parents should be able to help the staff and the educators implement this by having that conversation with our kids at home, stating, you know, the importance of making sure you put your cellphone away and listening to the teachers and the staff. So for me, it, it, that will help out a lot, getting the parents in board, having some training with them, or even having those conversations with our parents on this topic. And a lot of our students, a lot of the students I've talked to are for it. And it's just, I think it's going to be a lot easier when everybody is on board. We still do have that few population, but just educating them on the importance of this and how it works. Going back to your employment little part, I do not allow cellphones on the ramp at the airport. And so, you know, it's, it's a real thing. A lot of jobs, it's going to be for their, for their benefit in the long run.
Other feedback?
I think the only piece of feedback, I, this is not a deeply personal issue to me. My kids are young, this is not a part of their reality, so I'm not dealing with it as some others at the table are. But what I definitely don't like hearing is when teachers are at a school that has a policy and they can't get support from administration to enforce their policy in their class. And so I would just like to offer my support for us to do a better job of, if schools are asking for support, that we're giving it to them, and if teachers or buildings, I don't want to lose any more teachers because they are feeling unsupported over, over someone coming to help them feel respected when they're, they're, you know, trying to better our students. So that would be one area that I would just like to see us find, if, if we have more ways to support those who need it and want it, that we are increasing that in our timeline, not waiting until next fall to do so.
Kim, anything, nothing? So I, you know, it's not going to be a surprise where I sit on this, but I guess I would say that with much respect to our students, two of whom are in my house, we do things all the time to set boundaries for kids. And, and that's what we're doing here, is setting boundaries. And I think to Anna's point, I heard from a physician in, in Des Moines last week who said they were walking down the hallway of the hospital, and one of the orderlies that was pushing a patient to a surgery was sitting with their cellphone up next to the person's head, just sitting on their cellphone while they were pushing with one hand. We talk about social, emotional learning, and we talk about the skills that are needed for jobs, and in that deeply emotional, personal moment, we have somebody who can't be off their cellphone and just be talking to somebody when they most need it. And I think that highlighted, that story highlighted for me, the need to do a total reset here. It is, this is an intervention. This is not a, this is not a policy, this is not, this is an intervention for our kids because they are addicted to their phones. These machines were built for them to be addicted to their phones. And I just, all of the research says, all of the anecdotal evidence shows that cellphones are harmful to your attention span and to your outcomes, and the anecdotal evidence shows that when we take them away, that the outcomes get better, particularly for students who are the highest needs students, and that's what the latest research shows. So for me, if we're really about outcomes, if we really are about what we say we are, then this feels like an initiative that will hit all of those areas. It won't just hit one. This isn't one more thing we're doing that's outside the scope of our goal, goals and guardrails. This focuses in on exactly what we're talking about, conditions in the classroom, social, emotional health, all of the things that we say that we're about. So for me, in, in thinking about this and hearing from just this evening, another one of our associate principals at our largest high school who says, "Ban them, bell to bell." Because what we know is the brain needs time to reset, and when a student jumps out of class, you know, has their cellphone in their hand in the passing period, they then, then need to reset when they get back into their next class. We know that Hoover has had a lot of tardies because kids are on their phone instead of going to class. And so I think this is one where we can set some boundaries, and I think we can do it with a clear conscious that we are, we're doing the right thing for our kids, and I think we are, for me, we are teaching them responsible cellphone use with this, with this policy. So I would be in support. I appreciate the, the policy that you've put forward as a framework. I think it's really thoughtful. I think you've been incredibly thoughtful about this, and you've been open to suggestions, Dr. Roberts, and I appreciate that. For me, I think it sounds like waiting until the fall is where we're going to go in that case. Given the timeframe, I would be for a bell-to-bell policy, and I would encourage that bell-to-bell policy.
Thank you.
I think just my final comments, and I really appreciate what was brought up by Dr. Mayberry Mays. I think part of the reason we are where we are is because our students are addicted. Quite honestly, our adults are addicted too. And so I just hope that we think downstream a little bit. It was referenced digital literacy, I mean, human skills. If you look at Greater Des Moines Partnership, I mean, that's what they're saying is people want, they're missing human skills. And so ideally, the real solution is to start addressing this in middle school, probably. And so ideally, the real solution is to start addressing this in middle school probably, or whenever a kid has access to a phone. So responsible use is just more comfortable by the time you're a high school senior. So I just, I really hope we think about that. And then the second thing, you know, Hoover, DNPS didn't lead Hoover. Hoover led Hoover, right, to, to lead on that policy and take the initiative that they did. And so if I'm wrong, please let me know. But I mean, I think that was them really taking that on. And so if a school is interested in doing it, I would encourage us to think about how we might incentivize them if they want to move earlier and take action as a school. And encourage them to, to do things and not feel like they have to wait. That's just my thoughts. I think everybody had a chance to share opinions. So I think Dr. Roberts' next steps are for you to kind of take it in and come back in January?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Would love to certainly hear the feedback that was shared. I'll come back in January with another update. And then hopefully the board can take action then? Is that it? We can certainly talk offline. But this is very helpful, Board. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Thanks, everybody. The second item, and just so people know, we have this item that will move into our organizational meeting where we'll have elections. And then there'll be a quick break so our board members can get food. And then we will talk about the budget. Because you do not want a cranky bunch of people at a budget presentation. So we are going to now, I think our coaches are online, participate in a school board self-evaluation. We have Council of Great City Schools Coach Sendhil on, who's going to join us virtually. And we're going to try and limit this to 10 minutes, if at all possible. I don't know how the conversation's going to unfold because we've not worked with Sendhil before. So let's just see where we are. Are you online?
I am, thank you, Madam Chair. As several people noted earlier during progress monitoring, the, the goal of the board's work is really to get present to current performance so that that understanding can plan future adult behavior change because that's how student outcomes change. And it's the same for board self-evaluation. So I'm hoping that you can see the pages of the board's self-evaluation. Can you just confirm that, please?
Yes, we can.
The board members reviewed this rubric and considered the board's activities over the last three months in advance of its meeting. There were pretty widely divergent perspectives on the board's focus on student outcomes in each of these dimensions. Given the limited time, we're going to focus on the first three, not go through all six. But I believe we can expeditiously figure out where we stand. And I wanted to start with the, the first because it's the most important dimension of this rubric, which is vision and goals. And the, the way that this will be the most valuable is if we're using this review, not just to consider what the score is or to assess the board for that, for its own sake, but really to figure out what additional criteria the board can meet over the coming months and what steps the board would need to take to get there. And so that, that's really the lens with which it makes sense to review these specific criteria on each of these dimensions. And so there, there were a number of board members who put the board at zero, not student outcomes focused, which could mean that one of the criteria in the leftmost red column is true or that not all of the criteria in the second yellow column are true. So again, in the interest of time, does anyone have the belief that the board is, is doing any of the things in the red column? That the board has not adopted goals, has not consistently distinguished among inputs, outputs, and outcomes, or listened to the vision of the community in the last three to six months?
I, I was actually the one who said that we don't always distinguish between inputs, outputs, and outcomes. I think we have in our monitoring report, but I think we don't always do that. But that was just my one comment. But if everybody else thinks we did, we did.
I, I think that's a very valid comment. The, the wording of these criteria is intentional. And that criterion is worded not as an always, but a consistently. And if the board is consistently demonstrating the ability to do this, even if there are occasional deviations from that standard, the, the board would probably not be hitting that criteria in this limiting to zero. Okay. And now looking at the second column, a few board members did share some of their rationale. But I was hoping that folks could share which of the criteria in the second column the board is not yet meeting, if you feel that way.
I don't believe that we are meeting the item regarding our goal three. We do not have one to three interim goals determined to progress monitor our third goal. So we've approved a goal, we have not approved interim goals. So that, that particular item has not yet been met in the second column. And we've agreed that we wouldn't have that. So I think that we're all okay with being there for this year as a year one, or year zero, pardon me.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Member Mark Ron. I think Member Knox, agreed. That seemed to be the crux, the disagreement. Whether the existence of goals one and two that have, that are smart and have interim goals that can be updated multiple times is sufficient to meet the criteria in this column? Or because goal three is not yet at that point, that the board is not meeting that criteria?
I think we should treat this not being met because we're noticing that it's difficult to monitor goal three because we actually don't have, other than a Gantt chart. It's, it's harder to measure and have a conversation around. And so I, I, I think just where Jenna and Kim were, just being comfortable, being where we are on this is probably the place to be.
If I could summarize what I heard from members before this meeting and just now, the board had made a choice about goal three and about the timing of goal three with the understanding that that would make it harder to remain student outcomes focused because there are no interim goals at this time.
Correct.
And so, again, given our limited time, sort of move us along quickly. But what are the next steps that the board could take to get to the approaching level? Or perhaps beyond the meeting student outcomes focus level within the next three to six months?
I think we, as a board, agree that we are going to be at a zero in this particular column until we are done collecting data on a monthly basis from the superintendent regarding goal three. And that has been clearly mapped out for us today in our update. So continuing those monthly updates regarding goal three is the action that has been set forth.
But I do think, what is the timeline that we will move to having recommended interims? And that probably should be in spring.
We should establish, yeah.
And so the, the Gantt chart that was shared was shared by staff. And they shared a lot of information about the steps that they are planning to take. Does the board have a similar plan or commitment about next steps in terms of adopting goal three? Or of accepting smart interim goals for goal three?
I think that we should reevaluate them in February because there's a lot of pieces, including budget, including, there's just a lot to still unpack. And so I think the, the first starting point of a conversation about what we might even be able to measure won't be until February.
So in February 2025, the board will, will accept interim goals, is that?
No, we'll begin the conversation.
Okay. And when do you aspire to accept interim goals?
June. That would be the end.
Right. So the board's action step would be to accept interim goals. And at that point, would be meeting all of these criteria for approaching student outcomes focus, possibly further.
Yes.
So, okay, so the, the Gantt chart was responsive in terms of what staff was working on. And now we've complemented that with what the board is working on. Just before we move off.
Just going to say, I don't think the Gantt chart is actually meeting the needs of the board. But I think we have a process and a conversation ongoing with Dr. Roberts and his team to continue to drill deeper because the Gantt chart is not a standalone document. But with presentations like the ones we're receiving and the ability to ask questions, we're moving things forward.
Thank you for that correction. So the board is aiming to get to acceptance of interim goals for goal three by June of next year. And would that also come with annual targets for goal three as it is firmed up?
Yes.
Right. Okay. So moving on to the, the second dimension, values and guardrails, there were also some pretty varied perspectives on where the board currently stood. So the, the board has adopted goals. And my understanding is that the board has listened to the values of the community over the last 36 months. And so I was curious, for those who felt that the board is not meeting some of the criteria in the yellow column, what is the board not yet doing?
I feel that we're meeting everything in five. I don't think that we're meeting everything in 10. We don't have a theory of action written. So, but I believe that five is being met. Five?
I agree.
Thank you, Member Mark Ron. Thanks, everyone who's agreeing. I'm sorry, my, my screen is too small to, to see you all. So if I don't identify my, my name, that's fine. So looking at the criteria in the green column, what Member Mark Ron highlighted was considered adoption of one or more theories of action. That, again, the wording is intentional. It's not that a theory of action is required. It's that the board has considered their adoption. And in their, in, in prior meetings, I believe this has come up, many of which I've only seen in recordings. So my apologies for not knowing right away. And it's not that the board has to adopt a theory of action, but should consider. And the board may or may not adopt one. The superintendent and their staff could also adopt a theory of action if they so choose. So where does this board stand in terms of a theory of action? Do you all feel that you have considered that adoption and made a decision? Or you have not considered adoption?
We, as a board, I would say, have discussed it at a very high level, but not as the current seated board. And I'm looking to Board Chair. I, I, I don't think this will be discussed until the very earliest or next board retreat, which would be in, right now is calendared in June. And so, and I think we're all okay with that.
Right. So a step that the board could take to move forward would be at the June 2025 board retreat, consider adoption of one or more theories of action with some more specificity?
Correct.
And then, just before we wrap up, another really important part of the board's work is monitoring progress for the goals, as you all did in today's meeting. Again, there, there was some variation in people's rationale. But actually, every board member said that the board, judging from the past three months, is at the not student outcomes focused level in the red. Is that because one of the criteria in the red column currently applies, looking back at the last few months? Or is it because not all of the criteria in the yellow column are?
I believe that we're at a zero due to our time use percentage.
So none of the criteria in the red column are currently met?
Correct.
And so the question is, are all of these criteria in the yellow column met? There, there is a monitoring calendar. You all have adopted it. It spans the length of the goals. From what I've seen in the last several meetings, you have received monitoring reports. And so all four of these criteria seem to be met from evidence that, that you all have used in meetings or I've seen otherwise. You just highlighted the question about goal monitoring. In today's board materials, Rosie provided analysis of time use. And that analysis shows that the time that you all spent on goal setting and goal monitoring was well over 10%. It was between 30 and, and 40% for the last few months. So is that, is that the concern? Is it this last criterion, or is it something else?
So that particular time use analysis is only of board meetings? It's not all of our board authorized public meeting time?
Thank you for sharing that. Could you explain a little further what else is included in the board authorized public meeting time?
So any, any board authorized public meeting? So any committee work, any, any time that the, the board is coming together that is, that is authorized? And that particular amount of time? I mean, we spent, we spent four hours in retreat last Sunday. That is not calculated into that, that time. We, I think Patrick and, and I think three of our board members spent four and a half hours in a committee meeting last week. So that is not calculated into that, our board meeting percentage that you're seeing attached to our, our current board docs right now?
Is there anyone we haven't heard from regarding where the board stands over the last three months in terms of the criteria on this page? And a specific question about, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was, I was just trying to understand what, go on.
Oh, I was wondering if anyone we haven't already heard from had any perspectives about the criteria that you see on this page?
No comments, Sendhil.
Nothing for me.
Okay, thank you. And my, my final question, or sorry, penultimate question is about this last criterion in the yellow column. Do you all feel? Do you all feel that the board is meeting that criterion or not meeting that criterion based on the last few months?
We are not.
Could someone say a bit more about that and where, where you stand in terms of how that evaluation is going to happen?
The board and the superintendent have a mutually agreed upon evaluation tool that includes goals, guardrails, interim goals, interim guardrails, as well as organizational health.
And within organizational health, goals, three goals were identified and interim, the equivalent, the attempt was to provide, ask Dr. Roberts to provide interim measures that he set to be measured against.
I think to that point, if we continue to evaluate that way, which I am certainly supportive of with the organizational health, we'll never move past the second pillar of this framework or this, this evaluation model. So I'm okay with us being at a zero for this one because the, the solution is for us to not evaluate organizational health and have the superintendent be able to be evaluated on things that he does well at.
Thank you for the additional context. Does the board aim to change something over the next three to six months as far as this dimension is concerned?
No.
It sounds like the, the board does want to assess all board authorized public meeting minutes, not only those.
I heard there was a general consensus of no changes over the next three to six months. Was that the question asked?
Including meeting time?
Yeah, I mean, on, on meeting time, between what we have coming up, between the budget, reimagining education, these are initiatives that are district initiatives that the board has to be involved in that ultimately should be making the case to, they exist to improve student outcomes. But yeah, I mean, I, I can't obviously promise that. I don't know if other people have feedback, but I think it's too hard to commit to that.
Yeah, I think we're in consensus on that.
So no plans to change specific behaviors regarding this dimension? But the first two pages, there was a decision to reevaluate goal three and get to smart interim goals by June of 2025. And in the, the next board retreat, likely in June 2025 as well, the board will consider whether or not to adopt a theory of action. And if so, what, what it would be. So that, that is really the, the most important part of this self-evaluation process. It's not so much what is the numerical score. The rubric serves as a common structure to identify, clarify, and prioritize high leverage processes that the board can take. But it's the board's decision about how to move forward. So, and that, that's really all I'm doing here. I'm not telling you all what to do. I'm making sure that there's clarity of what the board is committed to. And those two commitments seem clear. They seem agreed by the entire board. And that, I think, significantly increases the chance of success.
I really appreciate you encouraging us to talk about this and to get to some accountability. So thank you for that. Any comments or other thoughts before we wrap up this section? Okay. Are we, I don't think we need to vote on this. We just, are we voting on this?
Typically, this would be
On consent.
A combined total would be voted on, on consent in the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. So we will see that.
From the coaches.
From the coaches. Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate it. We will now move into our organizational meeting. And we're going to begin with our items of privilege. But before we talk and then our vice chair talks, our vice chair has to make her last official act.
Yes.
Yes. Say it however you want.
Okay. Por el poder invertido en mí. By the power invested in me, we are moving our budget work to our session until session next.
December 10th.
Yes, December 10th.
December 10th. Last official act. Okay, so some of you may know that Maria chose to not run again for vice chair, although we obviously saw her leadership tonight. And we're just really lucky. And so I, I will speak on behalf of the board as chair in saying thank you to you for making the sacrifices that you did for a year, long year, and a successful year. And so thank you very much for all that you've done. This is on behalf of the board. So, thank you. Thank you. So I invite my board colleagues, if you have anything you'd like to say before we move to adjournment.
I want to beat Kim to it and just say, it's Thanksgiving week. And a year in, people still ask me whether I don't like working on the board anymore. And I'm, find myself this week incredibly grateful to be around the table with all of you. I don't ever sit down with you without learning something. And I feel incredibly privileged to work with you. I am thankful for all of you. So I hope I'm speaking for the rest of you as well.
I have something quick. Year one, we meet in Patrick, in these long nights. Maria, thank you. Thank you for being the example and being board chair and being the second one on the board and paving the way for myself and other Latinx people in our community. And then I also want to shout out, do a shout out to Central Campus Culinary Arts Department and Chef Matthew. They, they did turkeys for sale for a fundraiser. And I got notes that he made, him and his students made a total of 24 turkeys and over 400 pies.
Wow.
So parents, get those kids to work and help you with those pies on Thanksgiving. And then they even gave us a little treat of pickles that were harvested at our greenhouse. So Central Campus, the Culinary Arts Department, and then the Agriculture Department, just hats off to you, students and teachers and chefs.
Oh, Maria, I can't believe I didn't know you until we got elected together. I did not even know you until I sat at this board. And I can't tell you what an impact you've had on my life. You are in my head often. Sometimes I text you or if I'm having a moment of frustration, I think, what would Maria do? What would Maria say? And I remember us sitting at a board table, the board table on our first year. And very, sometimes it can all just feel like this is all a waste of time, right? I mean, you sit up here and it's this huge, giant, complex system. And it doesn't feel real. You talk about big numbers and just things that aren't important to real, making real action happen. And I remember saying something to you and you were like, you need to come with me to the Capital View winter dance that they were having the next day. And I met you there and it's like, just be with families and just be with students and do real things. And so I think about you all the time and that sitting at this table is a privilege, but it's, it's all for nothing if it's not meaningful and connected to, to the people we're here to serve, right? And so I just, I tell you all the time, actually, I text Maria often and I say, Maria Alonso for governor, because she is a powerhouse. I'm not even lying. I am so in awe and have learned so much from you. And I'm so blessed to have you in my life as a mentor and role model and friend and just incredible woman. So thank you for leading this board this last year. Thank you for being fierce and inspiring us all to be fierce. And I, you just have so many more lives to touch. You've done so much here. There's so much more you are capable of. So just thank you for sharing all of that you have with us this last year.
Thank you.
She's not going anywhere, by the way. Just want to make it clear, okay?
Mic drop. I don't know how I follow that. First, I would like to thank the parents, the Community Legislative Action Committee parents who hosted a wonderful event. And thank you to Dr. Roberts and team, including Shashank and for a wonderful session last Saturday at Capital View. Our next session with legislators is February 1st at Mitchell. We will be discussing preschool with Kristin Rourke and team and really invite everyone to attend and learn about the impact that preschool has on our student outcomes. And Maria, I'm incredibly grateful for you and the leadership that you've provided to the board, not only over the course of the last year, but your entire tenure as a board member. I appreciate your thoughtful response to much of what we do at the board table. And appreciate your voice. Your ability to be a voice for so many that have not had a voice is very inspiring to me. And you are constantly a reminder of who we represent at this board table. So thank you for that. Thank you for always being willing to listen and collaborate and push individuals on this board table to be the best versions of themselves. I am incredibly grateful for you and your leadership. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I go? I know, sorry. Maria, te lo voy a decir en español. I'll say it in Spanish and then maybe I can translate in English. It comes from the heart. Del corazón, del corazón. Este muchas gracias por aceptar ser líder de esta mesa. Es un trabajo tan arduo, pero haces un trabajo tan excelente. Y eres una super mujer, super mujer. Y has hecho tanto para nuestra comunidad. No, mucha gente no, no sabe todo lo que, el trabajo que es para, para estar aquí. Pero has hecho un trabajo magnífico. Y te quiero mucho y muchísimas gracias por dejarme trabajar bajo ti y siempre apoyarme. Te quiero mucho.
Thank you. I want to interpret that. She's awesome. Thank you.
I would just echo all of the comments. That's the challenge of going glass. All of the great things have been said about Maria. But one thing I've certainly appreciated is in these seven months, beyond just being my board buddy, you have been a friend and a really strong mentor to me on this board. And your ability to translate a lived experience to being the data behind people's decision is commendable. You never allow for a voice to go unheard just because they're not sitting here or sitting in the audience, which I always appreciate and hope that I can embody similarities.
Thank you. Thank you.
Maria, muchas gracias por su liderado. Thank you very much for your leadership. You are such a force to be reckoned with. I remember just doing this past year and a half or so, especially doing your leadership as the vice chair. Your ability to ask questions is a model and an exemplar. You lead by asking for clarity. Your willingness to make connections for me whenever something comes up, either by coming into the community or to, or one of the coffee chats or taking me into spaces where the Latinx family exists. You know, I hear so often, whenever I visit schools or in the community, from more than just our Latinx community, Maria Alonso, how they value you, value your leadership. I know that although you are stepping away from the leadership role, your guidance throughout the rest of this year is something that I'm looking forward to. Continue to be a voice for many who do not have a voice, for many who historically have had their voices suppressed and oppressed and quelled. And you remind us every single day that you will not stand by and allow that to happen. So muchas gracias.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yes, yes. Ooh, this was on the entire time. Just being here is an extreme privilege, has been since 2021. And particularly this past year, serving with Ms. Norris, I have learned so much. And I have gained deep insight. And it has opened my eyes in ways that I had not really imagined it could. And I so value the perspective that each one of you brings to this table. I value the work that our superintendent does. And in the last year, I've gotten to hear more about the incredible work that goes on in the buildings and the effort that each person makes every day coming to work. And it just sheds light for me on so many things. It gives me truly a different perspective. I have to say, it's been a true honor sitting by Jackie and listening to her talk. She speaks really good English. I love her brain and I love her feistiness. Thank you for sharing your knowledge. And thank you for the passion that you have shown me, that you have for the people, for serving and serving the people that we are here to serve. Each one of you, Rosie, you are amazing. And I don't know how you do what you do, but you really need, like, you need to get paid three times as much as what you get paid now. Mr. Shashank, are you there?
I second that motion.
Listen, can I do one of those, what I just did, by the power invested in me? But thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you for being patient with me, Jackie. Digo, I mean, digo means I mean, I mean. Ms. Norris, colleague Norris, thank you for teaching me. And thank you for pushing me. And thank you for believing in me. And thank you, thank you for just being such a great teacher. And Rosie, again, you're amazing. You're like, I want to be you. Seriously.
There's a magic wand. There you go.
You're talking about a superwoman, right? I mean, I'm just a mirror. Seriously, you are tremendously, uh, uh. That's a good thing, uh. So thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for letting me. Thank you for letting me serve, it's, it's quite an honor. I appreciate you all.
We appreciate you. Thank you for the flowers. And make sure you go home and tell your family how awesome you are. Make them watch this tape.
Thank you.
Okay. It's now time to adjourn. Signa dia, sign die, that's how I say it. May have a motion and a second.
Mar Torano, so moved.
Knox, second.
We have a motion by Mar Torano and a second by Knox. Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero, the meeting is adjourned, and I think we are going to go straight into calling the meeting back to order, if everybody's okay with that. So, I would like to call this meeting to order. I will now turn things over to Ms. Mar Torano to conduct the organizational meeting as our senior board director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senior.
That was very strategic. Senior in, in ten years.
Sorry, that was my wording.
The first order of business is election of the chair of the board. We have a process according to the board policy for individuals who are interested in moving into a leadership role. The individuals who are interested submitted their names for consideration to the board. I will now entertain motions or nomination for chair.
I'd like to nominate Jackie Norris for chair for 2025.
We have a motion for Jackie Norris to be chair of the board, do we have a second?
Campos, second.
Sorry, point of order, we don't need a second. It's, it's just a nomination.
Just a nomination.
Yes, the motion will be to close the-
Member can rise? It's been a long time since I've done this. May I have a motion and a second to close the nominations?
I move to close the nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Dix, and a second, please.
Campos, second.
Ms. Campos. Board members, please cast your votes.
Are we doing it on paper, or?
Yes. Sorry.
This is the, the current, the current-
To close the nominations.
Yes, we're closing nominations right now, so please cast your votes for that.
Yes.
Electronically.
Electronically. All right, the vote is approved, seven to zero. I have one nomination, and I believe we have a ballot in front of us. If you could please write your name and cast your vote for the individual who has been nominated, which is Ms. Norris, and please sign and pass to Ms. Rios, who will tabulate the ballot.
I'm gonna watch.
Come on, election worker.
Rosie will call out each board member name and their vote, and the total number of votes.
Skylar Mayberry Mays, vote for Jackie Norris. Patrick Dix, vote for Jackie Norris. Maria Alonso, for Jackie Norris. Jackie Norris for Jackie Norris.
Thank you.
Jenna Knox, vote for Jackie Norris.
Thank you, Jenna.
Ana Campos, vote for Jackie Norris. And Kim Mar Torano, vote for Jackie Norris. We have seven votes for Jackie Norris.
Poplar vote.
I will now swear you in.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the board chair of the Des Moines Independent School District as now or hereafter required by law? If so, please say I will.
I will.
Newly elected chair, congratulations. Next is the election for vice chair, I will now entertain nominations for vice chair. May I have a motion and a second to nominate?
Alonso, so moved?
Uh, I, may I have a nomination for vice chair, sorry.
You wanna do the nomination?
Si.
Nomination.
I nominate Skylar Mayberry Mays.
You have a nomination for Skylar Mayberry Mays. May I have a motion and a second to close nominations?
Motion by Knox.
Second by Campos.
Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. We have one nomination, I believe that we all have a ballot in front of us. If you could please write your name and cast your vote for the individual who has been nominated, which is Dr. Skylar Mayberry Mays, and please sign and pass to Ms. Rios, who will tabulate the ballot.
You get to. Right. Thank you. This is an extra one.
Vote counting.
Extra, nothing.
Skylar Mayberry Mays, a vote for Skylar Mayberry Mays. Patrick Dix, vote for Skylar Mayberry Mays. Maria Alonso, a vote for Skylar Mayberry Mays. Ana Campos, a vote for the Dr. Skylar Mayberry Mays. Jenna Knox, a vote for Dr. Skylar Mayberry Mays. Kim Mar Torano, vote for Skylar Mayberry Mays. And Jackie, a vote for Skylar Mayberry Mays. Seven votes for Skylar.
Yay!
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the board vice chair in the Des Moines Independent School District as now or hereafter required by law? If so, please say I will.
I will.
Yes. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Roberts for his superintendent's report.
I should say, congratulations, Dr. Mayberry Mays.
And welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations to you, and certainly congratulations to Dr. Vice Chair. We are in a week where many of us will convene with friends and family in places near and far. We are gonna sit around tables, sit on decks, some of you may even sit on yachts. Remiss in about everything that you have going on in your current reality, but being thankful. For me this evening, I'm thankful certainly for good health and strength, I think too often we take this for granted. But in terms of my professional pursuit, I am immensely grateful for the individuals with whom I show up every single day and do this work, each of the 5,000 employees. Additionally, I'll be remiss if I did not express my thanks and sincere thanks for this board, the composition, the work that you do, the way you push us, the way you challenge our mental model. I was at a conference recently, and I huddled and listened to a number of my superintendent colleagues from around the country, and listening to them share their experiences, it made me realize how lucky or fortunate I am to be part of a team that truly remains focused on what is best for children, what is best for students. And so, as, as, as I go into this weekend, I am just thankful for every single opportunity that I have to be part of this journey, to serve almost 31,000 young people, all of whose future, and futures, to a great extent are in the palms of our hands. And so, I wanna encourage every single person of this eight-member team to never lose sight of that, never lose our focus, and remember that we have to continue to disrupt systems. Leron Bennett, the author of Before the Mayflower and many other writings, shared that an educator in a system of oppression doesn't have the luxury of standing in the fence. You're either an oppressor or a liberator. I want us to think about which side of the fence we wanna be on, as we serve students who've sat in the margins for a very long time. Thanks to each and every one of you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Thank you, everybody, for sticking with us this evening, we appreciate all of you, and the meeting is adjourned at 9:29.